Nine o'clock, let's call the meeting to order. Roll call, Jerry, if you note, all planning commissioners are present, and Commissioner Nancy Trumpman is representing the county board today, or representative from the county board. Approval of the September 26 minutes, has everyone had a chance to review them? Any additions, corrections, deletions?
Moved to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in second for approval of the minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Approval of the agenda, today's agenda. For the audience, if you haven't picked it up, we have agendas in the back bookshelf back there, and we have nineteen items on the agenda today with consent items three through ten, tentatively. Anyway, move, would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda, if no one has any changes or...
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Consent calendar. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with the staff's recommendation by single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by the planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commission, our recommendations to Pennington County Board of Commissioners will make the final decision. I guess PJ, we'll start with you, as you want to read the items three through ten, and then we'll see if anybody needs to pull any.
Sure. Good morning PJ Conner, Director, Planning Department. Item three, conditional use permit review ninety-two nineteen for Harold Willis to review a mobile home as a caretaker's residence in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit ninety-two nineteen with the property owner's concurrence. Number four, conditional use permit review ten thirty-seven for Colin and Michelle Spurrel to review an accessory structure, a caboose, in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit ten thirty-seven with six conditions. Item five, conditional use permit review twelve twenty-one for Ken and Corey Tomovic to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit twelve twenty-one with seven conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review twelve twenty-three for Virgil and Judy Kirstad to review a vacation home in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit twelve twenty-three with the applicant's concurrence. Item seven, conditional use permit review thirteen twenty-two for Dudley and Isla LaPointe to review a single-wide mobile home to be used as a single-family residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit thirteen twenty-two with ten conditions. Item eight, conditional use permit review sixteen oh eight. By two-minute paving, Bill Krokowski is the agent to review a temporary asphalt plant and stockpile site for contract work in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit sixteen oh eight with the applicant's concurrence. Item nine, conditional use permit amendment ninety-three fifty for DH Storage LLC. Corey Weisbeck is the agent to amend an existing conditional use permit to add additional storage units on the subject property. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit amendment CU ninety-three fifty with eight conditions. Item ten, minor plat sixteen seventeen for Russell and Kimberly Johnson to reconfigure lot lines to create tracks seven R and eight R in Storm Hill subdivision. Staff recommends approval of minor plat sixteen seventeen with seven conditions.
Does the staff wish to pull any items?
Number nine.
Any others from staff?
No, sir.
Planning commission, anyone else wishing to pull any items? Anyone from the audience wishing to pull any items that were just read, that are currently on the consent calendar? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendars three through eight and item ten.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for consent calendar, removing item nine. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Items three through eight and ten are approved. Move to item nine.
Good morning, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. I just wanted to make a correction on item number nine. It's conditional use permit amendment CU ninety-three oh five, not ninety-three fifty, so I just pulled it to make sure that it got the correct number on there.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
It says in the agenda that it's conditional use permit amendment CU ninety-three fifty. It's actually CU ninety-three oh five. So I just wanted to make sure that it didn't get overlooked and that it got the right number on it.
So do you need a motion then to approve CU ninety-three oh five with eight conditions?
Yes.
Per staff's recommendation.
Is that a motion?
That was my motion, sorry.
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That will take us to item eleven.
All right.
Layout plat PL sixteen twenty-four.
Yes. Item eleven is layout plat sixteen twenty-four. This is to create lots one through three of Munyon Addition. The applicant is Deborah Munyon. The other landowner is Harry Munyon. As this property exists today, it is zone general agriculture district. It's twenty-nine point zero eight acres. Access to this property is off of Bradsky Road. This portion of Bradsky Road is within the Bradsky Road District. Currently, this property contains a single-family residence, a barn building, and an onsite wastewater treatment system. There is no special flood hazard area on this property. A little bit of history on this property, it was rezoned from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district in nineteen eighty. Then in nineteen ninety-four, it was rezoned back to general agriculture district to allow for a commercial feedlot as a conditional use. At that time, the subject property did not meet the minimum lot size requirement for general agriculture district, and a lot size variance was not obtained. Then in June of nineteen ninety-four, there was a conditional use permit approved to operate a commercial feedlot and cattle holding facility for a livestock transportation business on the subject property. That conditional use permit was then revoked in nineteen ninety-six. What they are proposing is they are proposing lot one, which would be eleven point eight five acres. It would contain the residence, the barn, and the onsite wastewater treatment system. Lot two would be ten acres, and is currently vacant of any structures. And then lot three would also be ten acres, currently vacant of any structures, but does have an existing stock dam on it. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. There was a couple of comments made. The county register of deeds did say that there is a Munyon subdivision already platted. She had commented that Munyon Addition is too close to being the same name, and had recommended possibly calling it Munyon Estates subdivision, or something other than Munyon Addition. The Department of Equalization made a comment that, on the original survey, it shows that this lot is thirty-one point six acres minus two point five two acres for right-of-way, which equates to twenty-nine point zero eight assessed acres. The preliminary plat that was submitted does not show how much of this area is in the right-of-way for Bradsky Road that cuts through the corner of the property. So she had recommended that a note on the plat be put on there to show how much of the acreage is in the right-of-way, and we have included that as a condition of approval if this plat is approved. So this request is actually part of a legal subdivision of property. The applicable court documents are included with your guys' staff report. This plat will increase the density of lots on a dead-end road system by two lots. The Pennington County subdivision regulations state that a dead-end road system shall not exceed forty units and two miles in cumulative length. Currently, there are actually sixty-five residences with address points that take access off of Bradsky Road, or other roads that connect onto Bradsky Road like Cattle Drive, Bremen Lane, or Back Country Trail. There are also an additional approximately seven lots that would take access off of Bradsky Road, five lots that would take access off of Bremen Lane, and three lots that would take access off of Back Country Trail that are currently undeveloped. So they don't have address points, we don't show that there's a residence on them at this point. Also, Bradsky Road is approximately three miles in length. Some of you might remember also, Bradsky Road was closed for a period of time in the summer of two thousand and fifteen because of flooding. Actually, I think it was closed a couple times. Also, there is only one means of vehicular ingress and egress on Bradsky Road. That goes directly up to Highway forty-four. There is no additional route out, or in. There is not a turnaround provided at the end of Bradsky Road, as would be required by the Pennington County subdivision regulations. Intermediate turnarounds are not provided every half a mile along Bradsky Road, which is also required by our subdivision regulations. And when the subject property was rezoned from limited agriculture district to general agriculture district in nineteen ninety-four, it did not meet the minimum lot size requirement, and a lot size variance was not obtained. Therefore, the existing lot is actually not in compliance with our zoning ordinance. So if this plat is approved, proposed lots one through three will either need to be rezoned, or obtain lot size variances. So ultimately, staff is recommending denial of layout plat sixteen twenty-four, as the proposed subdivision would further increase density on a dead-end road system with only one means of vehicular ingress and egress. However, if the planning commission does choose to approve layout plat sixteen twenty-four, we do recommend eleven conditions be included.
Is there a reasonable ingress/egress that doesn't cross Rapid Creek, or the creeks there? You know, if it got flooded out before, you know, and you just punched another road into forty-four, you're going to be crossing a creek. So you run into the same issue unless it's a fairly hefty bridge that's, you know, above the hundred-year flood plain.
Yeah, there, I mean, you can see the creek on these pictures. It does pretty much...
Is there a possibility to the west without crossing?
Um, I don't know if I looked that far west. I can pull up Rapid Map here, and we can see the creek.
You look like you had a...
Yes.
Question?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I had the same question. If you look south of section ten, I guess the question that I would have is, is the section line, is there a section line road or access path that leads from the corner of sections nine, ten, through and in between sections sixteen and fifteen to Antelope Creek Road?
There are a couple of section lines up there. Let me see if I can get Rapid Map to come up. Because there are some section lines that actually go north, south, and east-west along there, so let's see here if we can get Rapid Map to go. And we'll look a little bit further west.
I guess the other question I would have, appears that some time ago, we passed a forty-unit rule.
Yes.
And I don't know if, you know, that wasn't in effect that time, you kind of alluded to that in the report, too, not clear when it did. But I guess, you know, the requirement is that a secondary access be created. It seems like anybody that was after the forty should be part of that improvement, but I think that would be hard to prove and go back to do. So is there a suggestion by staff on how that would be accomplished, without putting an undue burden on just the current two lots that are being added?
You mean to correct the situation right now? Bradsky Road, it would depend on where the second means of ingress and egress would come out as to who you would talk to, because half of Bradsky Road is in a road district, and half of it is county-maintained. So I don't know if either one of those entities would be agreeable to a second means of, to helping put in a second means of ingress and egress up there. I'm not sure.
Well, this may be a good time to ask, but it got cut off last year.
Yeah, because the county highway department maintains Bradsky Road all the way up until the turn right up here by Dawkins Road, and then past that turn, it's up here, up in here is a road district.
Answer.
I have been trying to remember over the weekend after I read this, but it seemed like somewhere along the line when there have been questions, as far as the commission has been concerned, about this very thing. And it is sticking in my mind that because it was split between the road district and the county, that created some issues. And I do think that it would be important to figure that out again. I just, I just know there's been some problems with that whole situation, and I honestly can't remember exact details, but I, I know certainly after last year with Antelope Creek Road and with Bradsky Road, there, maybe this is the time when we can fix the issue, whether it's county that does it, or it's the road district.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff. My question is, it seems as though this proposed lot subdivision is really the result of a decree, and the intent, I think, is to somehow split this property between the two parties. Is there a vehicle that allows that to happen, but would restrict the other issues that are created by the subdivision? And I guess, in my mind, I'm wondering if you can allow the subdivision, but put restrictions on the property until such time further things happen? Or is that what you did with your recommendations? Does that make sense? Does my question make sense?
Yeah, mhm. Yep. Basically, with the recommendations, there is a, the very first condition on there would put in a restriction that prior to any sort of building permit or anything along those lines, that they would provide some sort of secondary means of ingress and egress. Yeah, or get a subdivision. They do always have that option. If this layout plat gets approved, they do still have to go through the remainder of the plating process, which would either be a minor plat, or a preliminary plat, and then a final plat. And along those lines, they could request subdivision regulations variances to waive that requirement for a secondary ingress and egress. And if that gets approved, then...
Sure. And that's, and that's kind of where I agree with you, Sig, where the, that kind of puts an undue burden specifically on this property, when really the sixty-five people that already have addresses out there, really, it's everybody's issue.
Well, and if I, if I, if I recall, I mean, we had a issue about a year ago, where we, you know, the issue was secondary access. And I mean, basically, you know, it was a two-track through the forest, and, you know, they ended up even cutting down trees and mowing some grass, so you could have access through that. So, you know, if it's just a section line that's open, and a two-track road that's drivable, that's kind of what we've used in the past, is, you know, it's emergency escape. It's not necessarily, you know, opening up a new road for, you know, day-to-day use.
Mhm.
Mr. Chair, that was going to be my next question. If that was the only egress in there, maybe I missed it, but if, how long was that bridge shut down during that flood?
About six months. It was early in the year, and it was late in the year when we finally got it fixed.
And everybody in that community didn't stay in there for six months, and they got out, how? Which route did they take to get out?
Well, but that was, Antelope Creek Road really only served about three or four people on a regular basis, and so they did a, they had to go a long ways down around towards, I think, down towards New Winderwood, down around through...
Down by my area.
Yeah.
So they can get out.
But they can get out.
The Antelope Road people could, but it, what, it had nothing to do with Bradsky Road at that time.
Right, but how did the, how did those families and residents get out of that area with Bradsky Road being shut down during that flood? That's my question. What route did they take? I've got some hands on the map.
Because here's the address points on this map, there's people that live all around there, south of the creek.
But your, your Antelope Creek Road is clear down here. Bradsky is all up here.
Well, I know, it's like two miles.
Yeah.
So they had to drive two miles and go east, and they come north.
No, they didn't.
But they could get out of there.
I'll let Mr. Scott speak, you probably have the background on it since you're...
Yeah, good morning. My name's Dean Scott. I'm the surveyor for the, for the landowners. I just wanted to mention that Bradsky Road itself was never shut down. It was close, but the bridge, I believe that was, was the Antelope Creek. And of course, if this ever were made a loop, I think the most practical connection would be to bring Bradsky Road down to Antelope Creek Road. I haven't been out there in quite a while, that far south, but I do think that could be opened. But I don't know whether it is within the limits of the Bradsky Road District. That's what I don't know.
But then Bradsky Road itself was never shut down, then?
Not the Bradsky Road Bridge. It was close, but it was, it was not shut down.
It was close. How long was it closed for?
I'm one of the landowners that lived out there, and at the time...
Please state your name for the...
Oh, excuse me. My name is Harry Munyon, and we're on the agenda next. But they actually had two culverts on Bradsky Road midway down flood, and it kept it close for approximately three or four hours until the water subsided. That was in twenty sixteen, and prior to that, it was about ten years before that, before they actually repaired those two culverts. It flooded, and we had egress out through Gordon Howey's pasture, and that's how we left. In the twenty sixteen, that would have done no good, because Old Folsom Road and Antelope Creek Road were both shut down to numerous culverts, and bridges flooded, because I went out that way and experienced that myself. So in this particular case, even if you had egress on Antelope Creek, it would not have worked. There was a bridge to the east end of Antelope Creek that was completely washed out, from what I understand, probably is still out. And Old Folsom Road was awash for probably about two to three hours at that same time.
Mr. Chair, I have, I have another question. So I guess path forward, if this is, if this is denied today based on the recommendations, you know, which are safety-based, quite frankly, how does, how does that, what's the path forward with the decree then? Does that go back and, and get discussed?
Well, if I read the decree, there is, it's, wasn't there something about, if it's not possible, there was kind of an out about selling? I don't know if that's our role to take care of.
Sure.
Kinsley grew up from the state's attorney's office. The attorneys would just have to take it back to court and somehow get it amended based upon the fact that it didn't pass through. So it would have to go back, it would have to go back to court.
I guess one thing that I wonder is, is it, is there a time element on this? I guess I think there was on the decree, wasn't there?
That, that actual time has passed.
Okay.
The ninety days that was mentioned in the decree. So that has not really been an issue between the two parties at the time. It more has to do with dividing the interest. And yes, there was an out, as you say, to where the property becomes sold. Now, Deb Munyon, the other party in this request, presently lives in the house that would be on proposed lot one. And as I understand it, she would like to remain out there. So I imagine that if this division is impossible, I imagine probably she would be in a situation where she would need to purchase Harry's interest and the remainder of the property if it needed to stay as one parcel. Right now, it is known as government lot three, isn't it?
Government lot one.
Government lot one.
Mr. Chair.
Where?
I have a question for staff. Would it be appropriate to continue this and give you guys a two weeks, four weeks to talk to County Highway?
And that's kind of why I was asking on the time element, I had the same thought. If nothing else, to see if the section lines have been vacated going south, or if we could use section lines as an egress, ingress/egress if needed.
So, you know, based on your experience, do you think it's appropriate to make a motion to continue to the next meeting, or move it to, to meetings?
Well, since this is just a layout plat, if you do approve it, it doesn't necessarily mean that the whole plat itself would be approved.
Okay.
So you could approve the layout plat, and then we could speak more with the County Highway Department.
Until they get further into the plating process.
Yes, yep.
Mr. Chair, I have a struggle with approving the layout plat, because it's sort of setting your precedence. And so I would rather see us continue it and have the staff talk to Highway and see whether or not there is some way to do it. With that road district right in the middle, it does create different issues, and they're going to have to walk through it. Maybe two weeks isn't going to be enough, but rather than just outright deny it, I would rather see us give it a chance to, to actually move forward by finding out the information.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Where?
I'll make a motion to continue layout plat sixteen dash twenty-four to whatever meeting is a month from now.
November fourteenth.
Okay.
I have a second.
Do I have a second? Oh, was that a second? Okay. Motion in second, further discussion? Any further comment from Dean or Harry?
Not particularly.
Well, if there's anything else I could do, I'd like to take care of it right now, and then address some problems that will be presented later. I do know the person that owns the property, that we could open that section line up. In my mind, the best route would be to have the Bradsky Road District attempt to do that, using it as an escape route only, not open it up to vehicular traffic unless there's a catastrophic event like the floods that we had in twenty sixteen. Put the gate at both ends and allow egress and ingress at that point for emergency use only. I think Bradsky Road District, or a representative of that road district should maybe possibly handle that. There's a few other items on here that I believe can be addressed directly to planning and zoning before your next meeting, and maybe alleviate some of their concerns, and go from there.
Are you opposing continuing, or are you...
Yes, I'd say continue, but I'd make, I'd make the recommendation that maybe the Bradsky Road District should be the one that attempts to open up that. Instead of getting the Pennington County Highway system involved again, where you have the road district in between the two, that would make no sense to me.
Well, if we have, if we continue, the staff can look into that opportunity.
Sure, sure. That'd be my recommendation, too. But is there any other questions or concerns? Well, I'm up here to, I will be out of town, won't be able to attend the next one, so I'm going to have to have some personal representative stop town, that's all.
Mr. Chair, you're, you're going to be out of town on November fourteenth?
Yes, I'll be in Alabama.
Okay.
So.
So we could maybe do it in two weeks?
I'm, I'm open to amending the motion in terms of...
It would, two weeks would...
Sure, two weeks, that would work.
Will that work with the chair?
We're, we're doing our meeting on the, at six-thirty that evening.
Oh.
We're going to discuss the suburban residential issue of the VHR.
That's right.
So it's an evening meeting that time. I don't know if that works for you or not.
Oh, it can make it work.
Anyway, six-thirty is the time we're having our next meeting. That's the twenty-fourth, if I recall, right?
Yes. Mr. Chair, Cassie, does that give you guys enough time to talk to County Highway and the road district personnel?
County Highway, yes. It would depend on how quickly we can get in contact with the road district.
It sounds like Mr. Munyon has an in, maybe.
Yeah, yeah. We have a contact for them, so yes, we can, we can do that.
We have a motion, did the secondary approve, agree to change in date to...
Sure, if that, if that'll fit your schedule, we'll move it to the twenty-fourth.
We have a motion in second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm good.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, and we are continuing that item to the twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Yes, the agent is unable to be in the audience today. Let's see here, Pacifica. Okay. Item twelve, rezon sixteen oh nine, to rezon forty-five acres from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district. The applicant is Pacifica Lonepool. The agent is Davis Engineering, and the property is currently zoned general agriculture. They're looking to subdivide the property in the future and through the city of Rapid City, and when that is done, it will go below the forty-acre minimum required in general agriculture district. Therefore, they're asking for this rezon to limited agriculture district, which is in harmony with our future land use and...
future land use and comprehensive plan. Current zoning, as you can see on the boards in front of you, this request was routed through the interdepartmental review. No items of concern were raised and staff recommends approval of rezone sixteen oh nine.
Questions for staff? Staff's recommendation is for approval. Does anyone want to offer amendment to that effect?
I'll move to approve rezone R Z sixteen dash zero nine. Per staff's recommendations.
Motion.
A second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Any none, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Item thirteen, Plan Unit Development P U sixteen dash oh three.
Just wanted to, I was trying to check. The applicants are not in the audience. They made no indication that they wouldn't be here today. This was, coming on to this date was actually their choice. Item third.
Mr. Chair, could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
PJ, are you here for item nine? Yeah, we've already covered that.
So, it's good.
Yeah. So, I, I just saw you sitting there and I thought you might now want to sit through this next item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item nine, Plan Unit Development sixteen zero three to rezone twelve point nine one acres from General Agriculture District to Plan Unit Development to allow for specialty resort development to include uses such as vacation home rentals, weddings, receptions, picnics, family reunion, satellite church for one hundred to one hundred and fifty people, church functions, parties, single-family residence, bed and breakfast, storage gift shop, spa, cabana, bistro, detached accessory structure with living quarters duplex, et cetera. That was the original request. That's still what was advertised. Since then, the church and the satellite church and church functions has been removed by the applicants as a request. The applicant's agent and agents are Dan and Nancy Evangelisto, Century Home Crafters LLC, Century Land Holdings LLC, and Summer Creek Inn LLC. I'm just going to go through, as this was presented once back in June and there was a thirty-three page report that everybody's had in their possession since then. We tried to get it out as early as possible for you, so there wasn't that much to review. So, I'll hit some of the highlights as we go through. Properties, the properties are currently zoned general agriculture. Since two thousand and eight, the applicants received approval of conditional use permit for varying uses on the subject properties. Those uses and requests have increased subtly throughout the years since two thousand and eight. And in two thousand and fifteen and sixteen, staff had felt, and this was the previous director and then me, that going to Plan Unit Development would be more appropriate for the varying uses that they would like to have instead of multiple conditional use permits that would come up over and over and over and over again. Planning developments do come up for review periodically, so we felt that was the best choice for them. So, P U D sixteen oh three consists of thirty-three consecutive lots owned by the applicant's families and neighbors. So, as you can see on the board in front of you, all the lot, this is the entire subdivision. If the property has an X on it, they are not included in the P U D request. The ones with the numbers are. Primary ones of interest are lots three, four, ten, eleven, and twelve, and we'll talk about those in, in a little bit. Just some history on the property. The applicants did request a rezone from General Agriculture to Highway Service District for multiple lots in two thousand and seven. That was denied by the Board of Commissioners ultimately in two thousand and seven. Applicants came back in two thousand and eight with a conditional use permit request for, to allow a bed and breakfast. On March tenth, two thousand and eight, that was, was approved by the Planning Commission. And on June twenty-eighth, two thousand and ten, two years later, C U P oh eight twelve was revoked by the Planning Commission per the applicant's concurrence and replaced with conditional use permit ten seventeen as an amendment. So, ten seventeen just added some extra uses on the property, so it became a recreational resort to include a bed and breakfast, up to ten rental units, special events to include weddings, wine tasting, rehearsal dinners, and family reunions. Since that time, conditional use permit ten seventeen was also revoked and replaced by additional conditional use permit fourteen oh four, which is the conditional, which is the current conditional use permit on that property, which allows weddings, wine tasting, rehearsal dinners, family reunions, and multiple other uses, but primarily for them to have that temporary tent on lots ten, eleven, and twelve, and to also build the, the retaining wall that they have. We'll have pictures of that later. They've also applied for and received multiple construction permits. They applied for construction permit fourteen oh seven to grade and level areas on the hillside. That was denied without prejudice by the Planning Commission. We're on page five of forty, if anybody's following. Since that was denied without prejudice, it was replaced one year later by construction permit fifteen oh eight. That was, been approved by the Planning Commission, extended once by the Planning Commission on May ninth, two thousand and sixteen, and will up for review on April of two thousand and seventeen. They also received a construction permit number fifteen oh nine to review a construction permit to grade and level areas of a hillside on lots ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen. It was approved by the Planning Commission May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, extended by the Planning Commission on May ninth, two thousand and sixteen, and will be up for review in April of two thousand and seventeen. There was also road construction permits within a section line, C S fifteen oh four, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners on May nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. The next review of this construction, road construction permit in a section line will be reviewed in May of two thousand and eighteen. Okay. Existing conditions on the lot, so all the lots, as we said, are zoned general agriculture with the future land use of Plan Unit Development sensitive. I'm not sure how it's coming up on the screens, but there's considerable amount of Plan Unit Development sensitive up there if you can follow my, my logic up there. All the lots were plotted in nineteen sixty-one in book eight, page one forty-six. And just for the record, the lots that are being included or requested to be included in the P U D are lots three and four, lot seven, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three B, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, lot forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five. Okay. Now, going through some of the more, the lots that need a little bit more explaining because a lot of these lots are, are vacant. Lots three, four, ten, eleven, and twelve currently have a specialty resort and bed and breakfast, Summer Creek Inn, that holds up to ten guest rooms, parking, a waterfall, retaining wall, beer and wine bar, a bistro, gift shop, spa, cabana, gazebo, storage sheds. They have, it said, these lots are run by conditional use permit fourteen oh four. And just get you a picture here of what we're looking at.
I do have a question. If I could interrupt you.
How about it?
You're saying eleven and twelve, and I guess, you know, I'm looking at conditional use fourteen oh four. It, it was amended to include lot twelve. There's never a reference to eleven throughout any of them to be included as part of.
Let me go back a little bit. In the original fourteen, oh, then I misspoke. So, it's, ten and elevens are adding to eleven. With this one.
With this one.
With this one, yeah. So, I misspoke on that one, yeah. But there was a construction permit, I believe, on eleven. Because that's also, I think that's one of their future grain fields, if I remember correctly.
Confusion because ten, eleven, isn't that the developmental lots at one time?
At one time.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's still some of that going between them and.
Fourteen oh four did not add eleven.
But ten, eleven, and twelve were all one, were all considered developmental at one time. Yeah. All right, let's go back a little bit here. So, what's different from the conditional use permit for lots three, four, ten, eleven, and twelve that they're requesting now? They're, they're asking to add in a beer, a bistro, gift shop, basically increase the, the spa activities, the cabana, gazebo, storage sheds, vacation home rentals, and possibly a private single-family residence. That's what they're looking to add, add in, which is different than their original conditional use permit. Also, lot number seven has three R V spots on it and they're asking to have lot seven, I'm trying to get a picture of it here. Their request for lot seven for P U D sixteen oh three is to have three sites for uses by residents or friends of the P U D. Possibly have a single-family residence or a vacation home rental or a bed and breakfast or a specialty resort. Originally, when staff was out there and talked with the applicants, they said they would not be taking any money for this prop, for this, for these rentals. Then during the meeting, they came up and they revised that and are asking that that be revised in the final conditions for this conditional use permit because they do want to at least collect enough to maintain for the care of the lot, the electricity. There's also three septic systems on that lot which are permitted. So, they basically didn't want lot seven to be a loss for them. Lot twenty-seven currently has an existing garage as an accessory building. Let's see if I can find that picture. There were two building permits that were applied for their, one for the garage and one for a single-family residence. That is normal for the planning department to issue both. You cannot have an accessory structure prior to a principal without a conditional use permit, but if they apply for both building permits at the same time, they have two years to get them all done. They only built the garage. They did not build the single-family residence, which brought, brings that property into violation, so it's considered an illegal lot. That is one of the violations they would have to clear up. However, this application, if they put it in as an accept, as a use to allow an accessory structure on that lot, that clears that violation. So, we have a violation on record, but this is one of their steps to remedy that. And that would be lot twenty-seven. All the lots that are proposed by the applicants have varying setbacks on the lot. Some are smaller than others, some are larger than others, and those are all in the staff report. There is an existing road district, a Summer Creek Road District. Road District, of all the lots that are in there, most of them are part of the road district, but not all of them. The road district's duties vary from maintaining the roads and determining location and construction standards for approaches and lots within their jurisdiction. The applicant did provide map B for the interior traffic flow for ingress and egress. Skipping over to page twenty, the applicants have requested some changes to the original staff report, but the bulk of the pages in your forty-page staff report are original to what the request was in the beginning and from page twenty-seven on, they're, they're new. The biggest concern that was coming up, not the biggest, but one of the concerns that came up is a temporary structures. Either, and this has to do with the large tent that they put up on their property for their weddings and receptions. Conditional use permit fourteen oh four allowed that as a temporary structure. Temporary was never defined. It was basically as needed. It's a large tent. The applicants have said it does cost them quite a bit of money to take it up and take it down. So, and we normally don't, I can't say we've ever have permitted a tent as a permanent structure. Doesn't mean we can't, we just never have done it. So, the applicants are either asking that we, that the county allow a tent to be permitted as a permanent structure or we say what temporary is. So, that's kind of one of the challenges that we're looking at today. This was routed through the interdepartmental review originally when it came up. Highway Department had some concerns about the, about the roads, but ultimately said on June eighth, two thousand and sixteen, after a site visit and further research, the Highway Department commented, it said, with this new information, the Highway Department amends their comments to be, if the P U D does not significantly change the traffic volume of Taylor Ranch Road, the Highway Department would not be opposed to waiving roadway improvements to Taylor Ranch Road. They're not looking to increase or subdivide any of the lots at this time. So, we would say they're not looking to increase the, the proposed traffic in there as every lot in there could conceivably already be plotted to have a residence. But again, this was plotted in nineteen sixty-one. Register D just had some comments about the zero, the lots that they're requesting with a zero-foot setback, that they always be sold together to maintain that zero-foot setback. South Dakota D N R Water Rights commented that they currently do have a water permit, number twenty-seven thirty-seven dash two, for the operation of the Summer Creek Inn and they are, the applicants are proposing additional wells for the rest of the P U D. We're on page twenty-two. And if they are looking to add additional residences, they will have to get new wells and new water permits. See, where else do we go here? The county environmental planner, planning supervisor has some concerns about the size of the lots and if they're looking to put a residence on the property, this, are they large enough to hold a septic system? There is always the opportunity to put a holding tank on there. It's not a desirable fix, but the applicant also had mentioned to me that there were profile holes and percolation tests done on most of those lots before, and I believe some of that information is in, in your packet. There were no comments received from the Summer Creek Road District itself, the South Dakota Department of Environmental Natural Resources, Johnson Siding Fire District, Fire Coordinator, and Black Hills Power. There were two citizen complaints that came in on June thirteenth and those complaints are included in your staff report. Both of those complaints have been looked at and closed. I actually spoke with one of the complaints the other day and informing them of what the outcome was. On June thirteenth, during the Planning Commission meeting, P U D sixteen oh three was continued to the June twenty-seventh Planning Commission meeting per the Commissioner's concerns and there were sixty conditions at that time. Moving over to page thirty-one at the bottom, on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen, the plant, during the Planning Commission meeting, P U D sixteen oh three was continued again until the July eleventh, two thousand and sixteen Planning Commission meeting per the, for the applicant to address the two complaints that we had talked about. Since that time, those complaints have been closed and the applicant has either complied or we've found additional information that answered the question of the complainant. Moving on to page thirty-three. On July eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, P U D sixteen oh three was continued to allow the applicants time to address the above-mentioned concerns and a new hearing date was not part of the original motion to continue. So, the applicants called me and we talked back and forth and today is the day that they were requesting that this be continued. They're not looking to have it go consecutive in meetings, so Planning Commission Board, Board, because of their prior plans and commitments. They're asking if it, if it was to go normally, it would be this meeting, then, then the County Commission, another County Commission because it's a rezone, so it has three readings. But they're requesting that if you were to recommend approval today, it would go to the Planning Commission next month, then skip a few weeks, then go back to the, I'm sorry, go to the Board next month and then to the Board again in December. So, basically getting November's kind of knocked out of it. So, since all this has occurred, the, the staff has received additional complaints after July eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, which was the last time that this P U D was in front of this Board. It was C O V sixteen oh, one seven four, one seven five, one seven six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty-two, and eighty-four. They're on page thirty-three and thirty-four of your staff reports. All of those complaints have been addressed and closed by our ordinance officer. Staff met with the applicants to discuss bringing sixteen oh three back to the meeting. As I said, it's going to be, of course, today. The applicants have chose to have P U D heard from the Planning Commission today and then on section thirty, let's see, twenty-one B on page thirty-four, that kind of explains a little bit more about their desired route for the P U D and their timeline. One of the changes that they would, are requesting in the P U D conditions from the original sixty is that the spa services not be for massages only and instead state that spa services should be allowed for, per compliance of state license regulation. They do use contract employees to come and go in their spa, which is a permanent room, but the people that actually do the spas come and go as needed. They're also asking to remove statements relative to not renting R V sites or accepting money for the use of the R V sites and instead change the condition to include a statement that friends and family of the P U D are, are permitted to use the R V lots. They're also, again, asking to either allow for the permitting of a permanent tent structure or to set a time limit and define what a temporary permit is, how long that's good for. They're also looking to amend one of the conditions as far as putting up barriers along the roadway. That was basically the eat, the west side of lots ten and twelve. The concern was them pulling out onto Summer Creek Drive. So, staff recommended keeping the barrier statement in there. So, we tried to find a compromise and basically to say that allow, where is it here, that it's now condition twenty-five that the applicants were thinking of requesting that that wording be changed. And in condition number five, it's basically that they're not, they don't back out onto Summer Creek Drive, but they, the way that they come in from Taylor Ranch Road onto Summer Creek Drive, they could be facing forward and it'd be the applicant's responsibility to maintain that. They're also asking that condition forty-three be to allow one hundred and fifty guests instead of the stated one hundred guests and remove the words massages only. We already covered that, but they're requesting one hundred and fifty guests and that's primarily for their bed and breakfast operation, their weddings and receptions. And again, that one hundred and fifty number was approved some time ago in a previous conditional use permit and for some reason, which you can't find, went down to a hundred guests. So, therefore, staff recommends approval of Plan Unit Development sixteen oh three with fifty-nine conditions. And, oh, I'll wait.
Oh, I'll start with a couple of questions I have, I guess. Uh, who's the developer that, uh, did the 1961 plating of this area?
Uh, if it's not any, I don't know. I don't know. I'll look through this stack of paper we have, see if, can read the stamp.
And I, part of the question there is, there's a couple of references to, in the, uh, suggested, uh, 15, 59. Anyway, uh, of references to the developer making a decision on, on things, and do we know who that developer is then?
The new developer, the old developer? I did find-
It doesn't define that, so I mean, is it the original developer that gets to make that call?
Okay. And we can define that now, if you'd like. I believe the applicants intended it to be themselves.
I assume that, but I mean, that's not clear.
Yeah, oh, we, we definitely want to make things clear, that's-
And then, uh, and I guess, given the situation, that, you know, and some of this, we, you know, we discussed before, uh, you know, usually PUDs are done when the lots are first split, and I think even, you know, uh, what's put here, planned unit development districts, section 213, the intent of the planned unit development is allow districts in which the ingenuity, imagination, design efforts are on the part of the builder, architect, site planners, and developers can produce desirable residential developments. So, it's implying that's by the fact that saying builder, architect, site planners, and developers, that it's done up front, not after the fact, and so I, but I know we're kind of between a rock and a hard place to come up with a good solution to deal with this. Uh, and I think it is unique that, you know, you look at that map, and we've got isolated tracks in there that are not part of this, and, and I feel that, you know, a planned unit development should be planned, this is too much of a wish list, and I think it, with, especially with isolated tracks that aren't part of it, um, you know, it makes a difference if it's going to be a single family, which a lot of these are saying, you know, it could be a melt, well, like this one that's got so many of the lots listed, nine, uh, 38 through 940, anyway, 30, 37. Those are ones that are bordering, uh, the ones that aren't part of this, and, you know, it says it could be a single family, or it could be a special resort. It, it definitely affects the character of the neighborhood and the remaining residents that aren't part of this, if it's a special resort or that. So I think it needs to be truly more planned instead of all these and/or statements in there. Uh, so, uh, that's, I'll start with my questions, and I guess the evangelistos can answer some of that when we get further down.
Sure.
Go to other questions.
I, I went back to the zoning book also and read this, and, and I focused also on, uh, to produce desirable residential developments, and I think the initial lots, which are cavalierly marked with an X, that's what they expected, and that this is clearly a commercial operation, and it should be zoned as a commercial operation. A PUD, from my reading, is supposed to serve a residential community, and I can't see that these businesses serve the residential community.
Other questions or comments for staff at this time?
To answer your question, um, it looks like the owner's certificate in the 1960s was a Bernice Muskamp.
You can read that.
Muskamp, something like that. U-S-E-K-A-M-P.
What page is that on?
Uh, it's not marked, it's-
It's, looks like this.
Well, didn't think to look there.
The comment of wish lists has come up, was, came up before, but I'd like the commission to take something into perspective. Right now, it's zone general commercial, I mean, sorry, highway, uh, general agriculture, which basically allows, has 25 permitted uses right now, and about that many conditional uses allow right now with a conditional use permit. So that's 50 different uses that they could do right now. They're asking, except for lots 3, 4, 10, 11, and 12, they're only asking for four or five per lot. And that's it. In a PUD, if you don't ask for it, you don't get it. It has to be stated in a PUD to be able to do it. And going to general commercial, I don't know if that'd be favorable in this area, or for maybe some of the lots in the front across Taylor Ranch Road, but, um, I'm not sure if that's the best choice for that area because of the allowable uses in general commercial.
Mr. Chair, so what you're saying, PJ, is that the formation of the PUD actually makes the uses more restrictive-
Much more restrictive.
Than the current zoning.
Oh, yeah. I mean, they're basically asking for four or five out of a possible 50 right now.
Well, and I do appreciate that, and that's why I was saying, we're kind of between a rock and a hard spot, you know, in trying to define this, and still, uh, I, I think give some respect to the people that aren't part of it, that are in the same subdivision.
Correct.
So, it's a balancing act there.
Yes, it is.
Uh, however, I guess I, I worry a little bit about the precedent we are setting by letting it be so open-ended. I mean, like, and again, different entity, but, uh, when I was on City Planning Department, I mean, sometimes it got down to the color, they could paint the house, you know, that's how detailed the planned unit developments are. And to leave it so open-ended, and it does affect the character of those people that are adjacent to these, like, lot 7, but three, uh, RVs right next to a house, it's no, you know, it is becoming a campground that's next to you, it's not the same as a house being there.
Correct.
You know, so I, I think there's, you know, I think there are some issues that need to be truly planned a little tighter, rather than just give all these and/or statements in, in there.
But there was, there was some comments from, made by the commission the first time this came up, that their conditions were actually too restrictive. And the reason that there's so many conditions is they're one of the first to actually try to incorporate the covenants, per staff recommendation, into the planned unit development. Because the only way for us to really enforce any of that is to incorporate them, which during a lot of our meetings, covenants comes up, and we usually talk to the applicant, "Well, put them into a PUD, put them in somehow as a condition." Um, in my mind, they're actually one of the first to try and do it. That's why there's so many.
But a PUD by definition isn't the intent to be more restrictive.
It's to be creative and plan, and I, I agree with both of you of how it is in the, in the ordinance, that's not how the county has interpreted it, or made it, or, um, made recommendations, at least for the last three years that I know of. We've allowed single lots to be P, become PUDs, and they've existed for decades.
Well-
Not in favor of this request or not, but-
Just because we've done things wrong in the past doesn't make it good going forward.
I, I agree, I agree, I'm just-
And I look at the other, you know, the part of the section 213, "Property and Buildings and Planning Unit Development are to be planned and organized as a single entity in one complex land use, rather than a group of individual buildings." Well, by letting the islands stay in there, we, we're doing just opposite of that. To me, it's, and, and I know, you know, they, they, I don't think they want to be, the ones with X's on them want to be part of the PUD, but at the same time, because it's the, after the fact, I think it needs to have some consideration. I'm not sure what that consideration is.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Barb.
I, I think the evangelistos are, you know, their intent is to create a really, really nice commercial business.
And I don't argue that, I think it's a nice facility.
And I, and I praise that, but I can't see it fitting into a PUD definition as is in our book. Because it clearly states that it, that the PUD serves the residential community.
So either way, the-
This doesn't.
Oops, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. So, either way the Planning Commission goes, approval or denial, at some point, you are setting precedent now. Either way, either way.
Sorry.
And I guess I disagree that, um, you know, the conditions, many of the conditions that are proposed are encouraging a well-organized, planned residential area. You know, with a lot more restrictions that are on, you know, on uses than lots here and there. So I guess I would have to disagree with, um, Barb.
I would also have to point out, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, permitted uses, I mean, PJ says, there's a lot of listed permitted uses for a PUD, and if they're restricting it down to a couple per lot, I mean, you're taking out some of the options that someone could get permitted uses for. I mean, it, it talks about, you can, they could be permitted to put mobile homes out there, neighborhood, commercial, school sites, parks, wind energies in accordance with section 317, vacation home rentals. I mean, there's, there's things that they can permit in there that are actually being restricted out of what they're asking for.
But that's the intent of the plan.
That's the plan, yeah.
Having a plan.
Right.
It, it doesn't, once you get the plan approved, you don't get to, the ones that you don't list, you don't get. I agree with you.
But you can come back and-
You can come, come back and amend it.
Correct.
And I guess that's maybe the point I'm leading into, I'd rather see a tighter plan, and if they decide that that whole subdivision becomes a, you know, specialty resort, which is allowed by a lot of the lots that are being requested, that it be a big specialty resort, you know, and, you know, but if it's going to be individual residential properties, that, that be identified now, and then you come back with amendment if, you know, you want to move, but, uh, you know, I, I think you're going to have, where the specialty resort is expanding, and I think that's actually, in this case, I think that's a good thing. I think there's a nice facility there, there's a need for it, that, you know, we've heard that, you know, we have chamber backing this from Hill City, uh, if I recall, you know, so I mean, we've got, uh, it, it's, it's serving a function, but it's also impacting residences as they didn't expect it, and it's unpredictable at this point to how they're going to be impacted. That's, that's my concern here, is, I mean, none of this, I don't think it'd be a concern if we didn't have islands of, of individual lots that aren't associated with this. And still taking access in the same streets, having the same neighborhood. Well, I, I'm sure we have audience members that wish to speak, I guess, if, if there's any immediate questions, well, from the Planning Commission, we'll go to the audience. Uh, and evangelistos, you want to make any statements first, and then, uh, open it up, or you want, would prefer to speak after other speakers? There anyone wishing to speak?
If it's okay, I'd like to read some comments.
Yeah, but please state your name for the record.
My name is Peggy Bowser, and this is Don Behrens. We are the owners of Lazy Pines Cabin, uh, 12971 Taylor Ranch Road, which is Lot 1, which is the uppermost X on this map. Um, and we'd just like to make some comments in regard to our personal dealings with the evangelistos since purchasing our cabin. The evangelistos have alienated most of their neighbors by their actions and refusing to communicate. Unbeknownst to their neighbors, they had an attorney prepare and record lengthy covenants on property that they did not own. The neighbors then had to seek the help of an attorney to have the covenants released and terminated. It took the evangelistos over three months to agree to release the covenants from our properties. Uh, I noticed that the covenants are included in your agenda packet, however, the recorded document releasing and terminating the covenants, uh, illegally filed against the individual homeowners was not. Um, we have attended a hearing before the DNR in Pierre, as the evangelistos have had, have been operating the shared well agreement between themselves, their B&amp;B, and the Newcombe Messer residents without the benefit of commercial well permit, permit for a period of five to six years. We have gone to Circuit Court with the appellants, excuse me, the applicants and petitioners to support our neighbors when they knowingly placed a fence 15 feet at one point on their neighbor's property, thereby denying the neighbors' full use and enjoyment of their own property while paying real estate taxes. Um, many years have, have passed that have given the applicants adequate time to establish the road to Summer Creek Inn from the south side of the subdivision as originally intended. It is our understanding that Taylor Ranch Road was never intended to be the entrance to the inn. Uh, prior to a road district meeting held in 2015, the evangelistos, as president and secretary, promised copies of agendas, minutes, bookkeeping records, and alike, excuse me, as the neighbors were all new to the road district and interested in its financial condition and operation. We questioned why such a relatively small road district with seven families had an attorney on the payroll. Just prior to the meeting, the evangelistos sold a lot to their friends and deeded 12 additional lots to themselves individually and their brand-new LLCs and family members, thereby ensuring the majority of votes for their own purposes. Uh, Dan and Nancy kept their respective positions as president and secretary, and their friend was elected vice president. At the urging of Nancy, Dan declared the meeting adjourned while one of the neighbors was cut off in mid-sentence. The neighbors have gone through the process to be deannexed from the evangeli, uh, the evangelistos road district. As the board is aware, the evangelistos started a campground, which was shut down last summer. Again, they operated a campground advertising the same on their website. We sought the help of the state's attorney to again resolve the operation of their campground. As Nancy indicated at the June 13th meeting, they decided to pay the fine and operate illegally, then pay their attorney to represent them in this matter. The condition that they continue to have a campground for their residents and guests at no cost has already been resolved. It is still a campground. All of our actions, with the exceptions of releasing and terminated the covenants, has been done on our own without the benefit of counsel. The issue of water is a huge concern for all existing residents of Custer Trail subdivision. We have had little rain this summer and could possibly be entering another drought. If the PUD is approved, we request that there be an added condition that the applicants be completely responsible for supplying water to those currently being supplied by their well, in addition to future residents whom they propose selling lots, to, inasmuch as the evangelistos have assumed total management of those wells without benefit of a water agreement. Are the property owners of Lot P, north of the B&amp;B, aware of the amount of gravel that has flowed to their lot from the runoff from the evangelistos roads? We urge the board to deny the use of an unsightly 40 by 85-foot white tent as a permanent structure. A building that blends into the surroundings would be a much better alternative. In addition to staring at a large white tent last summer and fall, the neighbors have the privilege of looking at Dan's large earth-moving equipment and trucks on a daily basis. We would request that he put them undercover in his garage as he requests that the neighbors garage their outdoor personal property. We are not against the residential development in the subdivision. We appeal to the board to not allow any commercial developments in the neighborhood. Possibly replating Custer Trail subdivision would be an option for the evangelistos rather than hoping to sell two, three, or four lots to one individual. We find it difficult to believe that any buyer would purchase multiple lots in a subdivision with horrible roads and questionable water issues in order to build a house. Most of the existing homes were established prior to the evangelistos coming to the neighborhood, yet it appears they want to control the complete subdivision. Uh, they like to have no noise while they have guests at their B&amp;B. However, Dan will run his equipment as early as 5:30 a.m. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to voice our concerns.
Don, did you have anything further?
I'm just really concerned about when you shut a camp down, campground down twice, you know, now we're back on the same page, that we want to put it back on board. I mean, I think we've, we've covered that. I think, I don't think any of the neighbors are opposed to them developing it. I think that the, the tactics of coming in and forcing everyone to do what they want to do really, really split-started all this. I mean, when they put covenances on everybody's property that they didn't even own, you know, you should, you should maybe talk to somebody or try to work with your neighbors. There's just, uh, not much communication, it's, "We're going to do what we want to do, and you're coming along." Uh, the tent is kind of an eyesore, I think, for everybody in the neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's a pretty good-sized tent, and I, I don't see how you can make that a permanent structure. Um, you know, I think as far as developing it and putting homes in there, or what they want to do, I mean, they're, I think that's fine, but a commercial development, I mean, where, where do we draw the line, you know? It's, it's a residential neighborhood, that's what it started as. I appreciate your guys' time, because you're in a tough spot too, so.
Questions for Peggy or Don? Thank you for your input, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning. My name's Donna Messer, and my husband William Newcombe and I own the property adjacent to Number 4 with the X and Number 11. These are just some notes that I had written, uh- that I had written prior to the last extension of, of this and I would appreciate your indulgence in letting me read them. Thank you. And some of my references to numbers are based on the numbers of the, or the original 60 conditional, conditions. And now that you've had a chance to review the 61 conditions, we would like to again request that the P U D be denied in its current form. We are not against the development, but we are of the belief that the evangelistos do not have the right plan for moving forward as the developer, nor do we agree that they are the right people to be seeking this development. Details are admitted, gaps are evident, and it's very open-ended and full of questions and loose ends. For instance, Number 9 and Number 43 speak to 34 parking spaces for the potential events of 150 guests and the tent on lots 3, 4, 10, 11, and 12. It sounds like a lot of space, but the topography just doesn't allow for that many spaces for that many guests. Number 10 and Number 33, that's 24 feet of roadway or is it a driveway? It seems unclear. Number 12 says temporary structures seen as tents and porta-potties only be erected as needed. They have asked to be able to erect the tent permanently. Isn't this contradictory? If the tent's allowed to be there permanently, would the porta-potties be there permanently as well? What will be the water source if the tent is allowed to remain up? There will be, will there be porta-potties placed permanently as well? Their location may be something very undesirable to look at from my back door. The tent is currently undesirable. It's not in any way keeping with the beauty of the landscape of the, the character of the surroundings. It sticks out like a sore thumb and we appreciate that Dan and Nancy want a space to hold their events, but it is contradictory to the character of the property maintenance. Number 25, the P U D allows for 40 structures. Where on earth are you going to put 40 structures on some of these very small lots? The evangelistos say they hope to, hope future buyers will buy two lots or more. My dad used to say spit in one hand and wish in the other and see which one fills up first. To my knowledge, the evangelistos are not currently advertising any of these lots for sale. Perhaps replating the area, as Ms. Bowser mentioned, would be more of a practical solution. Number 33, this is just one of the several conditions that allows for the developer to have license to approve structures, sheds, buildings. This opens the door for them to create and build anything they desire without any checks and balances. They could put up anything for themselves and then veto the desires of a future homeowner because they don't personally care for the design or the materials, et cetera. Number 37 and Number 40, this condition is very restrictive on how homeowners live. We moved to this area because it's a playground and a natural area of enjoyment for retirement lifestyle, for RVs, boats, motorcycles, four-wheelers. All are a staple of the area regardless of whether people are residents or vacationers. To specify that a person can only have two toys is taking away their right to use their property and have the lifestyle they desire. Number 42, this condition speaks about a retaining wall on Lot 11. Where will this law, wall be located? It's steep terrain and we would rather look at the natural trees than the gouged-out hillside and a concrete barrier. Number 45, the RV parking. This was denied in 2007 and they paid the fines and operated illegally after that. Why are we revisiting this? Lot 23B is slated to have holding tanks and a water system. What lots will this system service? What will be the, what will be supplied? Water, sewer, and septic? Who will manage this and any monies associated with it? How will water be provided to all the users of, of the wells that the evangelistos control in the event of a drought or a very dry, or a dry well? These needs and considerations for the unforeseen circumstances are important. Number 53, lots 10, 11, and 12, they're asking for zero setback on the interior lot lines? This puts a septic field in my backyard. Once again, the terrain's very steep and looking at the forest rather than a septic field would be significantly more in keeping with the property and the maintenance of the character of the land. I have a more current piece of information that I would like to share with you. Ms. Bowser commented or covered quite a bit, but very first off, the evangelistos filed covenants against all of our properties unbeknownst to any of us, and it was a very long time and a very tedious process to get those removed. My husband and I share a well with them that, which is actually located on our property. It took them seven years to actually go to D E N R and ask for a commercial permit for that well, which they should have done to begin with, in our opinion. Shortly after Peggy and Don bought the, bought their cabin, the Lazy Pine Cabin, then those covenants came, came about because of Peggy's knowledge and research and found out that they were there. And had she not been able to ascertain that information, then none of us would have had any opportunity to know that they were there until maybe time to sell our properties or do some other futuristic sort of thing. We purchased our home in 2013 and we were under contract when Dan approached our, the current owner, the lady that we bought it from, and erected a wooden privacy fence which encroached on our property. And in some areas, it encroached over 15 feet over the lot line, allowing them to have their land, have our land, using it for their events and profiting by it, and that became unbearable to us. At one point, we attempted to remove the fence and on that day Nancy's temper got the better of her. We filed restraining orders for fear of our property and our safety. She was screaming obscenities, shaking her fists, threatening lawsuits, and screaming more obscenities. The fence issue was ultimately settled outside the courtroom at the 11th hour, which again cost us in our pocket. Dan and Nancy are each officers of the road district, which is now consists of them, the garners, and their family members and various LLCs. These LLCs allowed a voting swing in their favor and many of us were new to the road district meeting and we were, had questions about the financials and we were basically shut off at the very end of the, of our questioning and told that our concerns were irrelevant. At the planning and zoning meeting back in June, the topic of the operation of the illegal campground was discussed. Nancy spoke about the RV camping. She said, "The people were using the evangelistos camper as luggage storage, yet lodging in the bed and breakfast." In our tenure in the neighborhood, this camper has always been under a protective cover, canvas cover. The summer of 2015 was the first time that it had been open in three years. Prior to and through the rally of 2015, this camper had lights on well after dark. People were seeing coming and going at times and the fire pit was burning and the water and electric were hooked up. Nancy also said that it was less expensive for them to pay the fine than to pay their attorney to fight it, and I believe she stated that the fine was $60. That's not being taken into, or what's not being taken into account is the weeks that they profited by having people stay there at $100 a night. Also during the 2013 meeting, the commissioners asked who would buy the lots. I believe that was one of you still on the panel. There's still hope and wish on their part that somebody will buy two or more lots at a time. They mentioned they came to the area to be in the woods, but they didn't want rustic architecture. However, they're currently gouging out the hillside and erecting tents and creating parking lots and even commercializing their own business more. As recently as the September 11th, my husband was working outside. Meanwhile, Dan was on his backhoe on the hillside on Lot 11. He hollered, "Hey asshole," down at my husband, multiple times. When Bill turned around to acknowledge that he was speaking, he said, "Hey asshole, yeah, you," and then he drove away on his backhoe. The maturity or lack of maturity ceases, never ceases to amaze me. We have learned as neighbors that we need to be diligent watchdogs. They have a CUP in place that they don't fully comply with at times. We cannot trust that the evangelistos will follow legal procedures, do the right thing, or speak the truth. As concerned neighbors, we have been called a mob and a posse. These folks here today are our neighbors. We have become friends. We have plowed snow in, on steep and icy roadways that continue to exist, helped with household repairs, shared tools and equipment, mowed yards, cared for pets, checked on each other when we're ill. Happily, we have shared birthdays, holidays, graduations, and recreation. These are the kind of neighbors that we all are and the kind of neighborhood that we would like to foster. We are rich in our friendship. We support each other and we will continue to be good and law-abiding friends and neighbors, all the while trying to protect what we own from backhanded deeds. We feel that by approving the P U D in its current form without further conditions to protect current residents and those in the future, and those of the future allows Dan and Nancy to continue bullying and threatening people as they don't, if they don't comply. Thank you.
Questions? I do have one. You referenced the 53 of the, I think that's the old numbering.
Yes, it is.
Anyway, that you were saying that the subject, with the zero setback, the septic tank would be in your backyard. Is there one now at that location or are you saying?
Not to my knowledge. I'm just, I'm skeptical that that's how it could possibly be.
I guess I would, I would guess that they probably couldn't put one there because even if there's zero setback, there are state requirements of 25 foot from a lot line, 100 feet from a well, and you said the well's on your property.
Correct.
So they'd have to be at least 100 feet away from the well to put a septic system in.
Okay.
And Sig, if, if I read it correctly, what, what it says, it says interior lot line, doesn't it mean those interior ones, not the perimeter lot lines, PJ, right? Would it just be those interior ones so that basically 10, 11, and 12, right there where they all intersect? Is that what they're trying to have the setbacks, all the interior lot lines? Or am I misunderstanding it?
Which condition?
53 where it talks about having zero foot setback on all interior, number.
52.
52. That lots 10, 11, 12 have a zero foot setback on all interior lot lines, 15 foot on the front and rear, and 10 on the sides. So it's just basically that tripod in the middle of the interiors.
I just want to make clarification in that aspect.
Because as was brought up earlier, brought up earlier, they were developmental. So they're trying to get back to that because there's already existing structures there that were approved through conditional use permit 1404 for that. So that brings it into compliance.
Mr. Chair, I believe you made a, a comment about plowing roads and stuff as neighbors. So your, your road district doesn't do that for you?
We're not part of the road district.
Okay.
We deannexed from that and so we, we help each other out in, in
Okay.
plowing situations when we need to.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Laurie.
So just so I understand, the lots with the X's on them are deannexed from this P U D?
Correct.
And deannexed from the road district, correct?
Yes.
All, all of them?
All of the ones with the X's.
I believe that's right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Well, I just, I just want to make one correction. The ones with the X's are not deannexed. They never were part of it. The P U D doesn't exist. They're just not included in the request.
So they're not subject to the conditions of the P U D?
Correct.
And they are not part of the road district?
As far as I understand, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Well, I guess I wasn't clear on that either, that the P U D and the road district are one and the same. I thought the road district was formed before the, this proposed P U D. So wasn't everybody in the subdivision part of the road district?
They used to be, but then you've heard kind of what happened with that. Yeah.
Okay.
But the P U D has never been there.
Okay, so all of them with the X are out of the road district?
And not part of the request of the P U D.
Okay.
And if I understand correctly as well, there's no covenant, covenants on those properties with the X's as well. Y'all had those covenants removed in a long, lengthy process, if I understood what you're saying.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, so again, the, the, the lots with the X's, you can, you have no covenants?
Correct, right. Where, they're all standalone properties.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Go to the evangelistos then.
Good morning. I'm Dan Evangelisto. This is my wife Nancy Evangelisto. First touch off on the last thing we were talking about, the X's being in the road district or under the covenances. Lot 9, 38, and 40, which are the X's on the far western border along 385, are included in the covenances and are included in the road district. So.
They're part of them.
Yeah.
Just those three?
Four lots.
What were the numbers again?
9, 38, 39, and 40. Ones that border Highway 385. I guess the.
Let's address the covenants first. The, the covenants, there were existing covenants on all of these lots. It was out of date, old. So we hired an attorney to update those covenants and re-record those covenants. We didn't just willy-nilly decide, oh, we're going to put covenants on them. They were updated and filed. When the five homeowners expressed that they didn't want to be part of them, we did have meetings and discussion about it and released them out of the covenants and said, okay, we'll just keep all of our lots in those covenants. So there's kind of a little different perspective as to what happened. Hindsight, second attorney has said we should have never released them from the covenants to begin with. We went ahead and did it as a goodwill gesture because they had no desire to be part of those covenants. Our desire was to create an area that was a, a nice desirable area that we didn't because all of these lots are small. And if you start putting RVs and boats and all of the other equipment that, toys that people like to have, you're going to have a mess. It's, it's going to look pretty trashy all over the entire development.
Most of the covenants I've seen have to be, to be changed or amended, have to have unanimous consent of all landowners? It didn't in this case?
According to the attorney, no. So it was a majority.
It was a majority, the way the originals were written.
Supermajority could record, so.
But, Mr. Chair, what you haven't addressed is when you hired your attorney, did you go with the consent? Had you met with them before you hired?
We should have and
We, we had talked to them about it.
And we regret not doing that, so.
The, the plan was to, and we had all the packets ready to go. They, we redid all of the covenants. There were packets that were addressed, ready to go to all of these homeowners to set up a meeting to review. We had to have a starting point because those covenants that were in place were so out of date. I mean, it was ridiculous.
I'm fine with you updating, but my problem, and I don't want to hear your explanation anymore because it's answered my question. My problem is that you went ahead and did it before you visited with everybody, and that is wrong.
I agree. I, I'm not arguing with you and that's why we released them out of it. And, and part of that was Don and Peggy were, made application for a vacation home rental and we opposed vacation home rentals and didn't want a precedent set, and so we recorded it trying to stop them. And that's when this whole rouha started.
But Chair, you're applying for it yourself?
Well, because it's already.
No, no, no. I, we, we disagree, but we're not going to be there forever. And if, when this whole development is built out and the homeowners association decides that maybe they want to have vacation homes in there, they can decide to do that. That's the only reason we added that, that in there. So in the future, if the homeowners as a whole vote and decide they want to have a vacation home rental in there, they can allow it and not have to come back and have the P U D amended. That was the only reason. We have no intentions of doing a vacation home rental in there as long as we're developing.
I guess, yeah, almost every lot that you're requesting your P U D has a vacation home rental listed.
Because we've been told, Dan, do you want to explain, or PJ, do you want to explain?
I, I guess.
It's basically if you put a single-family residence in there and a zone P U D, you can't have a vacation home rental in P U D unless you ask for it. So they're just adding that in as a possibility. So someone could live in there.
They were just saying that they don't want them in there.
Well, but they're, but if they sell, I can't, I'm not there to, you know, so if you don't put it into P U D and request it, you have to either come back and get an amendment or you don't get it.
My, my point of that it needs to be a plan and then you can amend it afterwards. There, there isn't a plan. There's a wish list.
Mr. Chair.
Laurie.
Can I just clarify? Can I just clarify? I think what you're saying is the, the, some or all of the lots that were excluded from your PUD with the X's on them are or may be vacation homes. Isn't that what you're saying?
Some of them.
And so you're just, you're just adopting the PUD to the character of the surrounding neighborhood, right?
Correct.
Or potential character?
Yes.
Is that, does that describe that accurately?
What he's saying when we don't want to have vacation home rentals is Daniel and Nancy Evangelist aren't going to go in there and build ten homes and have them all as vacation home rentals. That's what he's talking about. Not that we wouldn't sell to somebody, and if they want to have it as a vacation home rental, that's fine. I mean, precedent has already been set by one of the people here, but they have a vacation home rental on the property. So why should we be not denied that same right with our properties?
I, I don't disagree with that. I guess I'm just
So he kind of misspoke the way he said that.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to clarify that.
But you are asking, and I mean, you could, you could stand here and say you're not going to do it, but once this is approved, you could put a vacation home rental on every lot that you've put in the PUD.
Correct.
Okay.
To address some of Peggy Bowser's statements, I think lots ten, eleven, and twelve always were on one of the conditional use permits. We're saying lot eleven, I don't, you've, I think you were saying lot eleven wasn't included in the conditional use permit.
In fourteen oh four, it only listed twelve being added. And it's probably because of the developmental lot at the time. I'm just making the point. I'm not opposing that. I'm just
Sure.
saying it should be clarified that lot eleven is included.
And in PJ's statement that we're trying to add beer and wine, we had a beer and wine license, and it was being covered under the current conditional use permit for years. That was, we just added it back in. I guess kind of to reiterate, everything that we're doing now has already been approved under the existing conditional use permit. The operation of the bed and breakfast, doing special events up to a hundred and fifty, having a beer and wine license, and all of this was in operation when
All of them bought.
Bowser and
Newcombs.
Newcombs and Messer
Clausen's.
and Clausen's bought their home.
All of this was under operation, and we were doing these events up to a hundred and fifty, and the Tansin, all of that was there when they bought their properties.
The well permit, they said that we were operating without a, a well permit from the state. It was unbeknownst to us that we even needed one. Soon as we were made aware of it, the people in DENR said we were probably the fastest ever to respond and acquire that. What they failed to say is they also came to peer and tried to shut us down by not allowing us to get the permit.
The other, the other thing about that was, we have worked and have been in contact quite a bit with DENR about the lack of communications within their departments. So when we filed for the permit, the original, it wasn't made clear that we had to file for this additional permit to have the water as commercial. We were given one set of information and not all of it. So they have also been in contact with us, talking about how to make that process better. They've been made aware that because of this process, there's a lot of businesses out on three eighty-five and in Pennington County that don't have a quote "commercial" water license. And they're working to change that with kind of some of the things that have come up with ours.
Both of the people that spoke talked about this being unfriendly neighbors and this fence issue. Messer Newcombs, before they bought their property, they were correct that we got along great with the previous owners. She gave me permission to put this fence across the property line because she didn't want to maintain that part of the property behind her garage. Messer Newcombs were actually buying the house at the time the fence was constructed. Previous owners and them and I had this lengthy meeting. They were okay with it. They didn't want to maintain it either. And it wasn't until after this squabble with the covenances that all of a sudden now they wanted this fence moved. And part of it's, part of it's my fault because I didn't have an easement recorded.
We did, he did a handshake agreement. We were friendly neighbors.
So
Hindsight.
That's been resolved. The fence was moved, so that's been resolved.
They failed to mention the fact that they removed, came on the property with a chainsaw and one Sunday morning and started chainsawing the fence down. So, yeah, I was a little upset.
The campground, that's been a big, big issue. The only reason charges were filed against us was because four or five of these people wrote flat-out lies, saying that we were renting this campground out every day for the whole summer, making thousands of dollars, and that is absolutely not true. And the only reason, we didn't go to court and defend it because it would have cost us thousands of dollars in attorney's fees. We just paid the sixty dollars and moved on with life.
The only people that have ever stayed in that camper are friends of ours from Washington State. And they stayed
For two nights.
two nights during rally.
And they're talking about worried about water. The PUD, if you look in your packet, has an engineered water system, already engineered, designed. It shouldn't be a concern. So I don't know. Evidently, they didn't get that information in their packet or did, did their investigation. The gravel on lot P was one of these complaints. We talked with the owners, Gibsons from here on, they, they're not concerned about it.
They actually asked us not to go on their property and remove it because they thought it would create more of a mess. The gravel that did wash out onto their road or onto their lot was prior to the road district installing culverts and what's the other things?
Catch bases.
Catch base on them.
But, I mean, that's, that little bit of erosion that's over there's been happening since nineteen sixty-one, and all of a sudden now it's a concern. And it's a road district issue, not an evangelist of issues, so. But that's, that's all been resolved.
And road district is progressively fixing the road as money's become available.
They're concerned about this tent being erected. The tent was already approved and being used when they bought their properties two or three years ago. They made comments about construction equipment. We have several construction permits approved. We're doing construction. I'm not going to park equipment in a garage every night after I get done work. As far as starting at five-thirty AM, that's absolute lie. I've never started anything probably before nine o'clock, and I stop probably at five-thirty or six at night. So there's another
We have a bed and breakfast right there on site. So we have guests sleeping, and we are doing breakfast at the, you know, the early morning hours, so we wouldn't be out on equipment.
We have concerns about parking for these events. It's already been addressed and approved and, and done, so I don't know why they keep bringing this up.
And we actually provide more lots than what were really required.
More parking space.
More parking spaces than what were required to. We also use, encourage all of our events, the larger ones, to use buses and have guests brought in by bus. So that's one of the other ways that we've tried to help ease parking concerns.
I do have a question on
Sure.
on parking. I think, I don't know if, maybe this is kind of to PJ too, but stipulate or condition that's recommended in forty-nine is that lot forty-five could be for one of the following parking lot, specialty resort, and he goes on. But then condition nine lists overflow parking on lot forty-five. And so like, to me, if you're listing lot forty-five as being available for parking, then those other requirements, other possibilities should be taken away. You're, you're basically, you're saying only one, and then on, on number nine, you are saying you're going to use it for parking. So you've already defined that
Because we
lot forty-five is going to be for parking.
We already, on the existing lots, have more parking spaces than are required for what we're doing for our events.
No, I'm just saying, there's, there's a conflict there.
Yeah.
It's, it can be one or the other because you're saying only one of the following, and you've already by nines identified that one.
You can take it out as a use in the forties then.
Forty-nine?
Yep.
Forty-nine. Either that, or if you've got enough parking in other spots, you may want to leave your option open on forty-nine for
So you're talking about
Can we work with him on, on our number of parking spaces and whether or not we need to adjust that or not?
Anyway, probably a minor point, but I, I mean, it's part of this. If we move forward with approving these conditions, I think that's just something that should need to be ironed out. Along with lot eleven, if you, you know, that's parking too. Again, you go back to fourteen oh four, it wasn't listed as.
There it is right there. Okay. So you just want us to work with PJ on that then?
Well, let's see if other questions that make him up or
Also made comments of the total number of, of forty structures. That's, that's including all these storage sheds, cabanas, detached garages. On lot one, the Baron's property, the vacation home rental, they have three alone, just on
They have four structures on that.
Oh, three.
No, they have four. I counted at this point. They have an outhouse and two storage and a house.
Okay.
So there's four structures on that one lot.
There's an example. I mean, we're, so we're including storage sheds and everything in, in that number. So it's not going to be forty single-home residences on thirty-three lots. That's, and that's, and the way it was listed that way is because PJ asked us to do it that way. So that's why we listed everything. As far as me swearing it, that's absolutely not true. I've, I've never
I think it's pretty clear that there, there's never going to be a common ground with these neighbors and the evangelists. It, it's been evident by the numerous complaints that have been filed against us, from everything to hazardous waste to, you know, I, I, there's been so many, I can't even think. We've had a mediator meet with all of everybody trying to resolve issues. We think we get something resolved, and the next day, it's not resolved. So we are just as frustrated as they are as trying to come up with a common ground. So we, we strongly feel that a plan unit development will lay out a plan as to what can be done, and, and we've tried to be pretty respectful as to some of the issues that we could, like, like they said, that right now, we could go in and put mobile homes on all of these lots. That's not something we want to see for this community. We, we want a nice community.
Other questions for, questions for evangelists?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. The, the lots that are with the X's that are still part of the road district and the covenants, are any of those people here?
They are not. We get along with them fine. There's not been an issue. I think they're kind of new to the neighborhood, and they moved into this scuttlebutt, and they just kind of want to stay neutral. But we, we get along with them fine.
And, and just so I understand, the X's to the south, the four lots there, are or aren't?
Are not.
Are not?
The very bottom of the page, are not.
It's just, it's just the, the five X's along three eighty-five, right?
Correct.
Between seven and
Four, four of them.
Four.
Well, but there's, there's five X's though.
Yeah, but the very highest one is, is owned by Clausen's, and that's a separate residence on that lot.
So the one, the one by seven and forty-five?
Correct. The one next to seven on both sides
Is not.
Is not part of the road district or the PUD. And then the four
Kind of like forty-three to thirty-seven.
By twenty-three and, or by thirty-two and thirty-one, those four is owned by Mr. Briggs. And those aren't, he is not part of the road district or PUD.
Now, I do have a question. Those lots on that western side on thirty, three eighty-five underneath the covenants, are anything that you're planning to do according to what we have laid out here? And I'm just, and I'm trying to read through your covenants here. There's a lot of them, so humor me when I'm asking this question. Forty-five, forty-three, and twenty-nine at least touch those particular properties with covenants, is that correct?
Correct.
Are you doing something with those properties or have anything permitted for those properties now with the PUD that violates the current covenants that those individuals are, are going to be required to follow? Because I'm sitting here looking at parking. You know, there's a requirement on section nine for parking, and you're telling them that they're going, they have to park in, you know, lot in accordance with reasonable standards. They got to be, and it's a big paragraph, so I'm not going to try to read it through. But it seems as though if you've got parking on forty-five as a parking lot, you're not going to be meeting the same standard that you're making those individuals and that covenant meet. Unless I'm reading it wrong, but I'm just trying to, I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding the parking issues. I know it talks about no on-street parking, no vehicle or parking shall be permitted except in accordance with reasonable standards. Developer or property owners association, each owner shall, and tell me if I'm reading the wrong spot, but this is where I understand it. Each owner shall provide off-street parking. Two vehicles prior to the occupancy of any dwelling constructed on said lot. In accordance with reasonable standards established by the developer, all boats, motorcycles, trailers, travel trailers, campers, or other wrecked vehicles, not exceed two, shall be parked beside or behind the dwelling. Well, if there's no dwelling there, so where are you going to park those things if they come onto the property, property is overflow? Shall be parked beside and located such that they are minimally visible from any street or any other lot or any common area. Any vehicle that's required to be registered with South Dakota, and it just talks about the other stuff in there. My concern is that, you know, if you're telling the lots behind it, you've got to meet these criteria, but then you're opening up a parking lot right there. I would think that they would have recourse for some complaint. So I'd be very careful in at least the properties that are going against the X's, and I'm just going to use the X's as the properties that aren't part of the PUD, that you keep those as close to that residential, desired residential development aspect, you know, instead of leaving it open to a lot of other things, because I think that's where you're getting some of the rub. Because I, I went through here and looked and marked the properties that are next to those X's. And, you know, if, if you open it up to any kind of commercial or any of that kind of stuff, I can see why your neighbors would get upset because they, they bought homes expecting that they were going to have these covenants, this community covenants, and now everything's changing on them.
But when you say commercial, what are you talking about? Vacation home rentals or bed and breakfast?
I'm talking, hold on, let me get back to my other notes. I've made a lot of notes on this, just
Thank you.
Where was I at? I shouldn't use the term "commercial business," but where's the, where's it at?
Well, you're looking at it. PJ, I guess you made a comment earlier that a lot of the fifty-nine conditions are centered around the existing covenants. Is that true? So the covenants still underlie and still are applicable with the PUD, correct?
No.
Why not?
County does not enforce covenants.
No, county doesn't enforce that, but I mean
But they, we will in some way
The PUD doesn't, at the same time, the PUD doesn't make the covenants go away.
No, two completely separate documents.
Okay, just clarifying.
I found it, Sig. So for example, and this is what I went through and circled the particular properties. We'll just use forty-three for example, because it butts up against one of those pieces of property. You've got a specialty resort listed, you've got bed and breakfast, you've got single-family dwelling, and then vacation home rental. I'm personally not opposed to vacation home rentals. I think I've made that clear in the past. And a single-family dwelling, that would meet that desire of residential development. And yes, you can do some commercial or small commercial and residential because the PUD allows for it. But you're saying that potentially forty-one, or forty-three, forty-five, and twenty-nine, they could all house a specialty resort or a bed and breakfast. And I think that is getting away from the desirable residential development. At least to those people who have those properties right next to it, they might see At least to those people who have those properties right next to it, they might see that as, oh, now wait a minute. We follow these covenants. We can't do some of this stuff, but now you're developing and doing it.
Okay, but none of these.
Guys are out of the covenants.
Pardon me?
Those guys.
Not along forty-five, forty-three, twenty-nine. That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about that area.
But those, but those four are out of the covenants.
They opted out of them.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
No.
No, that's why we were asking.
Oh, they're, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Right along 385.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's the ones I'm talking, that's why I picked those. So that's where, that's where my concern is. You've, now you've restricted them to covenants, but then you're kind of opening it up where y'all can put a bed and breakfast there or something of that nature. And that's where I see that is, okay, I can see where you might get some pushback from neighbors because it looks like you're.
They haven't pushed back. Those are probably the only neighbors that haven't.
And that's something that we can look at and talk about.
Well, and the thing is, when we're looking at these, I mean, and some of what problems you ran into, ownerships change. And your ownership may change down the road, you know. And so, I mean, like, you know, when we're setting these, we have to look at that it's not necessarily going to be the same landowner two years from now.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Art, is the water system that's detailed in here, is that all installed?
Not yet.
It's about one-third installed. The well is drilled. The mains are run about one-third up Summer Creek Drive. At the very top of the subdivision, which would be the bottom of this map, will be in-ground cisterns that'll backfeed the whole development. It's already been engineered, designed, and recorded with the state.
And it's only one-third drilled then, or one-third built right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, there's a question about the water as well. There's been question about it. So how deep is that well that's currently out there?
Three hundred and fifty feet.
And never run dry, never had any issues? Do you know roughly what it? I've got a well on my property and I know during the drought, it's a forty-two-foot well. And it sits at thirty-eight feet during the drought. It went to thirty-six, so it wasn't very much.
It runs between thirty-five and forty gallons a minute. And that was at a drought when it was drilled. That was back in '05, which was, I think, really major drought here. So it still was produced on that at the end of an eight-year drought, so.
We also have the secondary well that runs Bed and Breakfast and Newcombs property. And that well agreement also allows for us, if we choose, to feed the cistern with that. And that one's producing a hundred gallons a minute.
So there's plenty of water.
Mr. Chair.
What?
Can I ask a question? You guys basically own and operate the wells that supply water to the people that will be part of your PUD or are, and/or are outside of the PUD?
Yes.
Does that put you in a bad situation?
That is exactly why we put it in Century Land Holdings has the.
There's a separate entity?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And so the people, whether they're in the PUD or outside of the PUD, pay for the water to this?
Some of them do, some of them don't.
To this entity, correct?
Supposed to, yes.
Supposed to, yes. Some of them are two years behind on payments to us.
Who owns Century?
Pardon me?
Who owns?
We do.
It's a separate entity.
Oh, it's a separate entity owned by?
Yes.
PJ, I have a kind of related question for you. I guess, you know, a lot of times when you have plating requirements, it includes the water system and like houses can't be sold until the improvements are made. And so what means does the county have of tracking before, you know, you're going to reach a certain point where DNR is going to be involved with the small community system? And you acknowledge that the DNR doesn't, and that too. How do we track that, to enforce that, to make sure that that water system is, at that point, is installed adequately to meet the needs and then meet the requirements of the small community?
Other than routing it to DNR or anybody else at the state for comment, we don't. That's what's come up so many times with vacation home rentals.
Well, it's not, it doesn't need to be in effect now, but at some point you're going to hit a breakpoint where you need to.
Correct. I agree. But it gets reviewed.
If the DNR isn't going to be out here checking it, it's going to be up to the county to.
Right. And right now we don't, but it is on the list.
Thanks.
Any questions, Travis?
One last one for me at least. That white tent, how long is it up currently? If we're going to talk about the white tents or the tents that you have and you're wanting to have clarification about.
Currently.
Defining temporary, I want to know what y'all are.
Currently, we can, whenever we have an event, we can have that tent up as needed basis. That's how it's been approved. As long as we have an event every month, we can leave the tent up.
So how long has the tent been up?
We actually took the tent down.
Recently.
Just, yeah.
Last two or three weeks.
So we generally, at this point, have just been having it up during summer months. We have many large Christmas parties that have wanted to use our facility and we haven't been able to do that. Valentine's Day, you know, we've got several different community events that have approached us wanting to do it throughout the year and the off-season to promote more business opportunities for the restaurants down the road, some of the other business owners along 385 and Out in Hill City. And this would allow them to have those venues as well.
So realistically, what are the two months you're not going to have the tent up?
It would be our desire to leave it up year-round.
I mean, you know, isn't that condition kind of not even close to being what you'd like? I mean, you'd like to have the tent up all the time, right?
Correct.
Working with PJ, he's, the verbiage, my understanding that with temporary, temporary permit would be ten months or less. Permanent permit would be year-round. And that's our, our hope is to get it up year-round for two, the main two reasons is it's, three reasons. It's expensive to put it up and down. It's major wear and tear on the tent, take it up and down. And then all the tables, chairs, coolers, everything that's in it, shuffling those back and forth.
So then we'd have to put some kind of storage container to house all of the equipment that goes in there. The dish machine, the storage for all the dishes, the chairs. I mean, there's a lot of equipment that'll be in there.
That's, that's why we'd like to have it up year-round.
So is the tent a type of structure that could remain in place year after year after year for five years, ten years, fifteen years? I mean, what's the life of the tent?
Eventually, you know, it may be that there'd be a permanent structure applied for and we eventually put a permanent one. But that would have to go through the process.
Mr. Chair. I'm curious how we work with Black Hills receptions.
We asked that same question.
Because theirs are up year-round.
Yeah.
They asked that same question. Staff hasn't looked into it.
Okay. Because it seems like it's up there all year round. Yeah.
Just also, there are two other permanent structures that were permitted for the lots near the tent. One was a kitchen and a bathroom, I believe. So it's not the only thing on the lot.
Did you get that email that I sent?
I did. If you want, do you want them up?
Yeah, I was going to say, so they get a better.
They sent some pictures actually right before I came down here, so I'm glad I got them. Progress report of the construction progress going on on those 10, 11, and 12. I think if you just go that way, because only three of them, they'll be, they'll be able to see them. It doesn't show well on the screens, it's better.
So you can see that there's large trees that have already been planted. So the tent will be up on one more level. And we also will be screening with large trees. Those trees were just planted this spring. So you can see that we're planning on trying to screen and make it less invasive as possible. The other thing, you want to click that? Wrong person.
Oh, that helps.
Just click it to the right.
So you can see that hillside actually will be screening one whole side of the tent. So it'll be, and then the other side will be all large trees.
Yeah, so that, that whole area up above those, up above that, where the construction site is, is all going to be heavily landscaped like everything down below. And those blocks are going to be stained.
And have landscaping put on there as well.
It's all going to blend in with the hillside.
Other questions for evangelistos? Thank you. So I guess we, before, I guess, before we move on, I guess, I think there's fifty-nine conditions. And I don't know if there's other ones that the planning commission wants to specifically address. I guess I would suggest maybe taking a five-minute recess. I don't know, anybody need a break or keep going?
I agree with the recess, but I do have some other questions on the stipulations.
Yeah, I think. Charlie?
Hey, I ask a question. My name's Charlie Johnson. I don't have a horse in the race, but I think you're missing something here. I'm, I'm head of our road district. And you have people in the road district and not in the road district. And I don't believe you can do that. You have to have legal access in this county to have a platted lot. And your legal access is based upon the roads that come in there. I think you've got to address that question, and I'm just trying to tell them, I don't have a horse in this race, but you've got two groups. You got one opposed to this thing and one that's not. I think you got a problem going there with legal access. A big one. Because you have to have that for everything, from a railroad crossing, you name it. So I think there's more than just the conditions is what I'm saying about this road district. Road districts are not well-defined. And if you get legal access involved in that and separate that, you got a real problem.
Well, that's why I was kind of surprised earlier that they could withdraw. I didn't think the streets were approved with the road district there, and I thought everyone had to be a part of it. I didn't think you could withdraw.
You actually have a road district, and you folks know it, that there's a place where there's four road districts in a row and the last road district isn't charging any fees and won't pay the other ones. I mean, you have that right in this county going on right now. Got to watch what you do about this legal access.
Thank you, Charlie.
Just one item of note, those roads are platted roads. So they have, they have that access.
Platted, but are the county, except on the county road system, they aren't?
No, the road district responsibility.
What else?
But they're platted.
She wants to say something about the roads.
Nancy?
Charlie's correct in, in, you know, the part about road districts and some of the things. There was a loophole that was discovered last year by three road districts, ours being one of them, that allowed for a homeowner in a road district to decide on their own that they wanted to de-annex from the road district. So you could, pardon me?
I've, I've heard this before. There's one north of town.
There were three of us. So as a road district, we can go in and we can get a loan from the bank and say, we're going to do all these road improvements, get it voted through our district to approve it. And five of them decide, no, we don't want our taxes to go up. We're not going to pay for it. We're going to de-annex. So the only people who can de-annex at that time from a road district and vote to de-annex are the five people requesting to de-annex. Crazy. That law has been changed, partly because the three of us that got caught in it went to pier and fought it and helped get that repealed, and that can no longer happen. So we were kind of a victim of a loophole. So that's why they were allowed to de-annex.
Thank you.
Okay.
Charlie?
They can de-annex, I agree. But what you, you're stuck in is we have county plating requirements, zoning, you have legal access. Their access can be denied by the road district because the road district is a separate government entity. It is not the county. And you've got to understand that they probably had the right to do that. But truth is, properties do change hands like all these folks brought up. I doubt whether if you told your banker, you could get a loan on the property for starters once legal access can't be defined. Now you've got this lot that doesn't fit the cookie cutter in Pendleton County. You've got a bigger problem than you think you got right there. I'm just trying to, I've really looked into this road district thing and there's a lot of problems because there's not a lot of definition.
And Mr. Chair, somewhat, that's what I was alluding to with this Bradsky Antelope Road, all that issue right there. That, that's what I was saying is there is a problem with the road district in the middle when we're talking about ingress and egress.
I want to pick on your county commissioners, but the problem is the bridge. There's no money for the bridge on Bradsky Road.
Pick on the voters.
Before we get into talking about conditions, unless somebody's got something short, I'd suggest we take a five-minute break and then reconvene.
So moved.
I'm going to leave at quarter to twelve.
Well, before, yeah, PJ. I guess, I think we're going to start losing people before we get close to the vacation home rentals.
Okay.
And we have audience members here that are, I'm assuming Charlie.
You want to table till later in the meeting, the PUD, hit VHRs and come back to it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, Mr. Chair.
You have to.
Are we going to have some, I mean, Kinsley, you're sort of being hit with this concern about access and all of that. Can you answer something about that today?
Kinsley Grodigan from the State's Attorney's Office. So I'd want to look back over these documents, but it looks like they were platted and probably platted as public right of way. And then the other thing is, once a road starts being maintained by a road district in the first place, it becomes public. It just is public. So I don't think that you could necessarily take it out of public use merely by people de-annexing out of the road district itself. So I think these roads are just public roads. And in terms of who is maintaining it or not, there might still be a controversy as to who bears the burden of maintaining certain sections of it. But it's still public roads if that was the main concern, that all of a sudden access is cut off because these are no longer public roads.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? So if you have a landowner, a homeowner who decides to de-annex themselves from a road district, they have every right to find their own access, correct?
If you can.
Somewhere else. I mean, if they decide to de-annex, which is going to affect their property adversely, don't they have an obligation to correct that situation and provide access?
They could find separate access, but what I'm saying is, I think the road itself still stays public and the road district can't prevent someone from using it.
Yeah, but I mean.
Yeah, they could, they could find separate access if they wanted to.
If they want, right? I mean, really, the county shouldn't be, you know, the nanny for access, right?
But aren't we in a way, because, I mean, you can't create a lot that doesn't have access. That's a point Charlie was making. And so, I mean, some of these could be, and maybe not in this particular case, you know, without looking at the map. But, I mean, you can't landlock somebody after they've been approved because that's part of our county's responsibility, is you can't create a lot that doesn't have legal access.
Well, that's what I mean.
These do have access.
If the road, if the road's platted, the road's platted. It's there. I mean, the road district isn't going to come in and take out the access.
Exactly.
But they have every right to create their own additional access if they want to. But the road district can't deny them access, right?
There might not be any gravel on the ground, but.
Yeah.
Maintenance may not get done.
Yeah, yeah. That's just that maintenance might not get done.
But, you know, at the same time, they, they chose to de-annex themselves. Then don't they have to suffer the consequences of that?
You guys, I remember up Dark Canyon several years ago, there was a situation where there was a couple of, of landowners who were not part of that district. And what a mess. What a mess. And they were right on the road. And what happened is that they didn't want to pay to have their, you know, their street because it was a spot thing. They didn't want to pay the road district. They didn't want to pay the county. It was a huge legal mess. So I do get a little worried when this is brought up. There is also one north of town like that. It can be something that's created when people don't want to be part of that road district. And it creates a spot issue that is a mess.
Commissioner Troutman, how were these, how were these resolved?
We had some legal issues that we had to go through some court systems and so on. Eventually, what you're going to have to do is somebody's going to have to buy out somebody or change how the road district is. We, the one north of town, we ended up having to take it over and it was a mess. So, I mean, there, there's some problems created.
I could see the, not, you know, a road district decided not to maintain it if it's a dead end. But if you got somebody here that's in the road district and somebody here that's not, and I'm the one that isn't. But, I mean, some, if, you know, if they want to get across to their lot and they're in the road district, they're expecting a good road. And I think it's the road district's responsibility to provide a decent road, not just because of somebody in the middle.
Well, that's how it started on North Town. Yeah.
Well, start, I guess, two questions. You know, I think, you know, do we need to look into that further? You're kind of being caught, you know, on, on the spot to look at that, to see if, you know, we, we do have an issue. And I guess the other, the other thing is, from a gender standpoint, I'm not sure even if we tabled this, you know, if we start vacation home rentals right now, I don't know how, you know, we're going to get done before we start losing people today. And we're meeting on the vacation home rentals on the 24th. home rentals on the 24th regardless.
Correct.
Specifically to, you know, talk about suburban residential issues, but.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think there's already a motion on the floor to have a recess, and that hasn't been resolved.
Yeah, let's take our five-minute recess.
Okay.
I guess, did we have a motion? I think we had a second.
Motion, I second.
Yeah.
Bridge motion, I second. Then there was discussion.
All in favor of taking a five-minute recess?
Aye.
Aye. procedurally, I'm not sure. I guess I'm just, what I'd like to do is, we'd probably need to vote to amend the agenda, but I'd like to go to the ordinance amendment, and for the purposes of continuing that, and Charlie and Rita, I apologize, and other anybody else for the vacation home rentals, but we've specifically talked about, on the 24th, we have the evening meeting, and the main item there is the vacation home rentals, and we were going to skip talking about suburban residential, but that's key to some of the other items anyway. I think we're just going to run out of time. We have some commissioners leaving. I think we're going to lose a quorum. Postpone it or continue to the 24th.
I have no problem with that. I just gave my word that I would be here.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm sorry, but I appreciate you attending the meeting. You're always good about being here.
Mr. Chairman, then, can I make a motion to?
I think we're in the middle of the one item, so I think we officially need to table it first and then come back to it after we change the agenda.
Got it. Well, I'll make that motion.
Table.
Motion is second to temporary table, the agenda item 13 that we're on. Any discussions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign, motion carried.
Kristen's second on that.
Second.
Now, to entertain a motion to move to item 14, I guess we don't, with tabling, we'd be on item 14. So item 14, entertain a motion to continue that to the October 24th, 6:30 PM meeting. Anyone wishing to offer that?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Motion is second to continue item 14 to the October 24th, 6:30 PM meeting. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just have a question. So is the October 24th meeting going to be exclusively vacation home rental and just a few, and maybe a few other items?
That's the intent. This meeting was intended to be a few other items and this PUD, and VHR. Things get added after this meeting.
Yeah.
Especially this one, because there was no specific timeframe or advertising required for the PUD to be heard.
Okay. Is there a chance that if you start getting items accumulating on the 24th, that you can defer them, or you can't do that?
We.
You have to have them heard at the 24th meeting at 6:30?
There are some like that. We do, we do talk with applicants if it gets, you know, those times where we have 30 or 40 items on agendas and ask if it's an emergency, can you wait one more meeting? We don't like to do that. I think the deadline's passed for the 24th, though.
Yeah, right now, I think there's maybe only two CUP reviews, maybe two or three conditional use permits, and one rezoned with a comp plan.
So unless there's any other things that get added like this PUD does, that'll be about it.
Yeah, everything's past the deadline for the 24th.
Okay, thank you.
Just out of curiosity, do any of them seem to be controversial, the ones that are currently on the list? Okay.
Anyway, we do have a motion, it's second on the table. Any further discussion? Bring none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign. Motion carried to continue item 14 to the 24th. Entertain a motion to bring back item 13 from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to remove from the table. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign, back to 13. I think we had a discussion on the road items. I know, Kinsley, have you had a brief chance to?
Yes. Okay, so I just wanted to put something on the record. Mr. Barions informed me that his understanding is that everyone that deannexed from the road district has alternative access off of different roads, whether it be Taylor Ranch Road or 385, besides Gary Riggs. Gary Riggs is the only person that deannexed from the road district that still uses the road district road. So there's.
And what lot is that?
The ones at the bottom of the map, the four of the lot.
These four?
The one owner owns all of those, correct? So, and then one other thing, I don't know if it was mentioned before, but that statute that allows people to deannex from road districts has been amended by the legislature. So people can't do that in the future. Nobody could deannex in the future.
At least for this item, it's a moot point, more or less.
Correct. But one thing is, basically, Mr. Riggs has, he's going to continue to have access off of Summer Creek Drive because it would be a public road. So, yes, there might be a question of maintenance, and he might have to make some of, some sort of a deal with the road district if he wants to get it shoveled, gravelled, salted, maintained, anything like that. That's his own private business with the road district if he wants.
And in reality, even that is far, well, looking to upper left, that would probably get maintained by the road district just to provide access to 27, so. Anyway, if there's no further issues on road issues, maybe that's something that needs to be addressed more in the whole as part of our comp plan and.
Yeah, I'm going to say that I am still very concerned about that, because I've just been through a lot of those issues over the years, and they're, what happens is, okay, Mr. Riggs is now paying taxes to the county, and he's isolated, and then he comes back. We had it happen in the valley, too, where he comes back and he's saying, well, the county then now has to maintain into his place, and it creates such a mess. And here we are talking about creating a mess. Even though they've changed that law now, these guys are grandfathered in. We've got a lot of road districts, and we've got a lot of issues, and I wish, I mean, I'm very concerned about that. That is not taken away from me.
Kinsley, did you have anything else to add on that, or?
So that's basically then just a question with the highway department, what they would do in the future, if they would ever sort of.
Because they actually now are receiving the taxes from the excess boxes, and so then we become responsible for maintaining roads into their place. And people come in and they go after us, and they say, "Well, I pay your, my taxes to you, you do it."
Yeah, and I think the highway departments kind of.
Don't think, Kins, I'm serious. You've said, "Think a lot about this whole issue," and I'm very concerned that I don't like making a decision on "think." I want to know.
Well, their position is, if something's not on the secondary system, basically, they don't, think they formally really maintain it. It has to actually be on the system for them to do anything about it, and this wouldn't be, so they could, Mr.
I hope you're right, because I'm just finding that my experience does not fall in what you're saying. So if that's changed, then I guess I don't know about that, and that's good that I do now. But I don't like the "think."
Well, that's what my research has been into it, is that if something's not on the secondary system, they won't maintain it. And so this property could ask for it to somehow get on the system, but it wouldn't, the highway department, if anything, if it somehow went onto the county's secondary system where it's that teeny little thing, then yeah, the county, but then again, that's a decision for commissioners to decide whether or not that would be added to the system, so.
And we're the ones who get into the mess with it. So we approve this and we create the mess for the future commissioners.
But I guess the mess would already be there. It's still there because he could ask for that right now. He could say, "Can you come in and please plow this portion for me because I deannexed out?"
But you're saying that the county highway is going to say no because it's not on our system, and yet that person has paid taxes specifically for that purpose?
Correct. But that's something that the policy would have to be changed then, just generally with county highway and with the county, because that's part of the issue, is that there's just not enough funds to maintain all of these little teeny roads.
Mr. Chair, so are you saying then that it has to be taken to court, correct?
Yeah, that's what she's saying.
That's what you're saying? I mean, it's like the guy deannexes now live with the consequences. If you want to test it in court, go ahead or figure it out yourself, right?
Yeah.
Because the county can't, the county can't take care of everyone.
Yeah, the county.
We don't have the money.
That was the reason why road districts were formed in the first place, so that legislation was passed so that road districts could form, was basically because counties can't maintain every little road every place. And so if they want to get out of paying taxes and use those taxes for their own purposes, well, they could form a road district and take that money, do that, but this is just the consequence of living really far away in this location where the county can't really do normal maintenance on it.
I don't know that we're going to resolve it today for this particular agenda item.
But I would just say that it's currently a problem as is, and so I don't necessarily see that the PUD would make anything better or worse or anything like that, because it's just a problem as it stands, so.
It's already been created.
Yeah, it's already been created as a problem.
I would suggest that we move on to looking at, the staff has recommended approval with 59 conditions. Are there planning commissioners that have specific questions, issues on any of the 59 conditions at the?
Mr. Chair, I have some questions.
Rich.
Item number six. The second sentence says, "Such sign shall not exceed the area of the existing subdivision signed feet." What does that mean?
Probably square feet.
Would you please, would you please reference your number and page?
Oh, I'm on page 36 of 40. Item number six, second sentence.
There's an existing sign already on the property, and we're just basically saying that if they want to do another one, they have to go through the proper channels through our office, but it cannot exceed the square footage of the existing sign, so.
So feet should be square footage?
So sign, square feet.
Okay. I have additional questions.
Sure, go ahead, Rich.
Number 12, and we just went through this a little bit, a little while ago, the temporary structure such as tents, not to exceed 10 continuous months in a calendar year, but what I heard from the applicant is, is they'd like to actually have that up year-round and not take that down for two months of the year. So is that, if we were to move forward, is that request, are we still keeping that at 10, or is the request now to keep that up for 12 months?
And if they want to keep it up for 12 months, do they need a building permit?
Even if they have a, if they put it up for one day, they need a temporary building permit.
Okay, so if they have a tent that they want to keep up year-round, do they already have a permit for that?
No.
Do we just make it a condition?
The question that I would have is what kind of permit? Are we doing a temporary, which isn't defined?
When again, I think the comment from someone was, shouldn't we treat them the same as the other facilities in the county? And we don't know the answer to that, right?
Right.
Correct. What we have done on other temporary permits, tents mainly, is because a regular building permit is good for two years, you have to have everything significantly done before the two years is up. We have done temporary tents up to two years. Has to be down, so it's actually twice as long as what they would request it during this meeting. That's what our common practice has been, because temporary is not defined yet.
Well, a question.
Most of them come up and down within a week or two.
Question I would have is, is like, if you're going through the city for a building permit, you would have to prove the structural integrity under snow loads and wind loads. And have they gone through that process for this tent? And we are putting the public, if you're talking about Christmas parties, holiday parties, possibly using that tent, you know, are we putting the public at risk if we haven't seen the structural and wind load data to allow it to stay up during the winter months?
We haven't, no.
Do you request that?
No, because we've never done one. We've never permitted a tent permanently.
Mr. Chair, you know, that's where I was trying to figure out Black Hills receptions.
Which we haven't looked into that. I don't know how.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how that works, because it looks like the same kind of tent, isn't it?
And it could very well stay on snow loads, slippery surface, fairly steep roof and stuff like that. Anchorage is probably a big thing in support of that, you know, but you'd probably need a structural engineer to sign off on that to get that.
I know there was one that was out in New Underwood that got blown over during the rally, and it was very similar. A lot of them do.
That's a concern I would have year-round without having that data. I would not, you know, to me, if you had that structural wind load, whatever other, those are two, probably snow load, wind load is what I would look at, you know. If those were provided, you know, to me, 10 months, a whole year, does it really make a difference at that point?
I don't have a problem with the year-round. It's just that I think that it needs to be treated the same. We need to understand how we're already doing it and do this the same.
So look at that resort. I mean, either there's a permit out there that they're allowed to do it, or they're in violation, and then we'd have to go and have to look at it.
That could be.
Because no one's complained about it.
That could be. Now I see why you didn't look into it.
Mr. Chair, my next question, it doesn't sound like item 12 necessarily has an immediate answer, but 13 would go along with that same scenario. Did I hear that they built bathrooms out there, though?
They have.
Or do they still have the porta-potties?
I don't, the structures aren't built yet. They have building permits to put a permanent kitchen and a permanent bathroom out there. And they're still active permits.
Well, Rich, if I could, I'll kind of piggyback on your question. Item 21, I question one porta-potty per 50 guests, and they have 150 guests, three porta-potties, and you're serving beer, wine, and coffee?
That is the requirement from DNR and consistent with what we suggest. If you'd like to put more in, be more restrictive, we can do that.
I would not have a basis for coming up with that calculation off the top of my head, but it just seems light. And I guess that's a minimum. They could put 20 there if they wanted.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, my next question is, as the lots are sold, and the water system is about one-third in or something there along the lines, what requires the applicants to finish the water system as the lots are sold?
Nothing from our building permit process.
So could that be added as a stipulation of the PUD then? I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, let's say someone comes along and says, "I'm going to buy lot 22," or, and maybe I have my directions flip-flopped, you know, right now, the 4X is down there on the bottom. Do they have their own well? They have to, right? Because the water system isn't up to them yet. Okay. But as it sits, the idea with the PUD is that we would develop this water system within the subdivision and create that. And I guess my overall question is, is that a stipulation that should be added to the PUD to require the build-out of that system as the lots are sold?
Dan, do you have a, could I invite you to come to the podium, I guess, do you have a schedule for completion of the water system, or is it based on as lots develop? Do you have a set timetable?
It's our intention that within the next two years, that whole system should be.
It's our intention that within the next two years, that whole system should be built out. With stubs, stubs to lots.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, on page twenty-two, section E, um, it does talk, there are comments from DNR Water Rights and also from. Additional comments about the water system, just because as a reminder of what the state's looking at.
Okay. Which lists the triggers for the fifteen service connections and our twenty-five people to make it a public water system?
Correct. It's a lot to keep track of.
Mr. Chair, I have additional questions that have.
You've got the floor.
Item number fourteen, um, it says all exterior lighting must be low level intensity and I was wondering what that means.
Well, it's consistent with what we have in our ordinance and we basically don't want to glare out, uh, surrounding neighbors, especially in an area like this where it's, is really dark.
Okay.
Um, they have indicated that when they do do the gardening or landscaping on the retaining walls, that the le- the light level will be more. Garden light, nothing will shine up into the sky, but if they do put a sign on the retaining wall, it, there may be some ambient light that. Reflects to that, but no light will be directed towards it.
Okay. So nothing points up? It'll all be pointing down or be at the level of the ground?
That's the intent. I mean, if it gets kicked while someone's walking on the path and then a complaint comes in, we'll see how it happens, but. Shouldn't be designed or installed that way.
Is that the right terminology? I mean, like, it, it's not necessarily low intensity. It's the way it's directed. I mean, that's, I think even the new Walmart parking lot is that. It's not necessarily low intensity. It's, it's basically like the Dark Skies Initiative, uh, lighting.
Right. Is it a low intensity or low, low angle?
Point, yeah, and I, I don't know what it is either, but it, it essentially makes sure that the area that's being lit is the, the light is, is going towards the ground as opposed to. Being shot up in the sky. My next question is regarding item number twenty-five. Talks about, uh, the measures be taken by the road district along Summer Creek Road and parking spaces prohibiting people from backing directly onto the right of way. And there was a complaint filed about that and that was closed. You talked about pulling through as opposed to, um, backing out into the roadway. Could you kind of show that on the screen or explain that?
Uh, yep, I can do that. And there is also an updated parking map in your. In your packets there. All right, we're going to try and use this. We'll see how this goes. Originally, there were supposed to be some barriers right about here. So that people weren't, when they were parking on those lots, they weren't coming out onto the, onto Summer Creek Drive. It was more of a safety issue. It came mainly from the previous director, not from any highway comment. Um, so we tried to find a, a happy medium for the county and for the applicant. To where basically no, they have to prohibit people from backing into Summer Creek Drive. So if they were to pull in forward. Facing, the front of the vehicle facing Summer Creek Drive, then they wouldn't be backing out. So that way it gets rid of the barriers and still gives us our safety measure. It looks like this.
So the bold line that is adjacent to parking spots fifteen through twenty-one, is that a retaining wall?
Fifteen through twenty-one? Oh, here? Oh, you're looking at Dan's map. Well, Dan drew it. Maybe he can address it if you'd like. But that is the existing retaining wall now. Oh, I see what you're talking about, yep.
Yes.
So then you could do that on lots twenty-three through twenty-eight, but, um, would you be able to pull in and turn around so you could pull directly out on the Summer Creek Drive? With items twenty-nine through thirty-five?
Uh, they'd be back in slots. And the majority of those, the intent for those are for handicapped and disabled and elderly folks to use. Because of the topography, if you've been to the site, um, straight ahead of parking space thirty-five is, is relatively levelable to road. And be handicap accessible was our intent of why we wanted to get those spaces there.
And the, the square, the rectangle that's there that covers the three lots, that's the tent?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Trying to get you pictures of that area there.
Rich, do you have additional questions?
I'm not of questions at the moment. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions or comments on any of the other items, the twenty-nine items?
I have one you're done.
Pardon me?
I have some when you're done.
Okay. Well, I got, uh, number thirty. And thirty-two. This is one I brought up earlier, uh, developer. Who, who is a developer? I think that needs to be clearly defined.
It appears in about five other conditions as well.
Well, anyway, but yeah, I don't think that is the only place, but I mean, I, I assume it's evangelistos, but I mean, it's, it doesn't really state that. Uh, you know, it could be construed as initial developer of the nineteen sixty-one plat, so.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? You know, I didn't bring my thing. We're missing a page.
Yeah.
Page thirty-eight's missing, yeah. That's why I kept looking at that going, what are you talking about? But I know you emailed it to us, but I didn't copy it, yeah.
But in the packets that were printed?
Yeah, that's correct. This is thirty-seven of forty.
We're missing thirty-eight, yeah.
And I have it because I printed it for what you sent out as an advanced copy, so.
And, and mine is twenty-seven and then a blank until you get to thirty-nine. It's all gone.
It's, it's fine. I just.
Yeah, the one that was emailed was the.
No.
Recent, but the one in your packet should be the official one, other than the blank pages apparently.
And, and it references our, uh, Architectural Review Board and I guess I assume that's defined in the covenants. Again, there's no definition of Architectural Review Board. That's in a couple of places. Forty's got the same.
Pretty much anywhere a developer is, that one appears pretty much right after it.
And then, uh, forty-two, uh, I understand that the chapel, church or whatever is taken out, but in forty-two still lists church functions. I mean, if you have. Having services there, that's, isn't that a church function? And I thought that was being removed or am I misunderstanding?
Nope, you're not, you're not wrong. I missed that one.
And I, I guess I commented previously on forty-four, so I won't state that again, but. I think it's inconsistent with the lots next door that our single family only allows one house per lot. And here you're putting three RVs next to a house.
Okay.
So. Just comment. And my last comment, oh, it's forty-nine, you, we already talked about that. Lot forty-five is parking and then it's allows other options there and they've just wordsmithed that to basically allow parking until such time they developed that for some, you know, another purpose.
Yep, so, uh, I'm sorry, wait, go ahead.
Pardon me?
I was thinking of rewording condition number nine. So starting at the sec- third from the bottom line of the word existing, a new sentence. So existing and approved required parking for a hundred and fifty guests must be located on three, four, ten, eleven and twelve period. Then create a new sentence that says with overflow parking on lot forty-five. Up until a time there is an establish, an additional established use on the property. Which would mean those other established uses would be the ones that they're requesting, either a house or an accessory structure or. That list. So once one of those is done there, that lot's not used for additional parking anymore. Just a guess, and I have not talked to the applicant about that.
It seems reasonable.
Is there any reason why forty-four couldn't be based on some of the concerns I had with the covenants and the other properties that are button right against it?
Topography is tough out there, but I'd let the applicant address that if you'd like as far as forty-four. If I can get it here. Topography is tough.
That's what I was wondering. That, that's my main question is it, is it because of topography? So your question is could lot forty-four be used for overflow parking instead of forty-five?
Because it's not buttoned up against those other properties that have covenants. And I'm just wondering, you know, trying to save trouble down the road. Just wondering, is it even, is it even flat enough? It might not even be flat enough. I'm just wondering. Forty-five, here's which. Because right now you have it on.
Right above the backhoe is lot forty.
So there's the road. So this, so this is forty-five and this is forty-four.
Correct.
Roughly.
So forty-five has already been graded and gravelled.
You can see behind the backhoe how the, the gravel's already there, lighter.
That was a condition on the previous conditional use permit is why that was, has been installed.
No worries. I just wanted to see. You, when you see it, it kind of makes a little better sense.
Yeah.
But I just was wondering.
Is that it?
Yeah, for me. Thank you, Dan.
PJ, do you have other items?
Uh, just a couple of things that were coming up as you guys were discussing and, and just to reiterate, I have not talked to the applicant about these. Basically, there was some concern about the vacation home rental requests on the properties. And that if someone was to buy that, that they come back and amend the PUD later. So what if the, the vacation home rental options were taken out? That's fine. It's fine. I mean, it doesn't.
Leave them in because it's already an established use in the area. Unapproved, I mean, it's already an approved use in the area.
I mean, it's just an option, so.
I would have liked to see it since evangelistos have indicated they don't want to do that currently if, if they're selling it. So I mean, that time we're changing property owners anyway, assuming. That's the, maybe the point where go to vacation home rentals and. I, I guess the other thing is that we work through our vacation home rental thing, uh, you know, one thing I'd like to address is density and lot size. You know, I don't know if we will get to that point. Uh, it's not in the recommendations of Vacation Home Rental Committee. So, uh, anyway, uh. We may be grandfathering a use that will, by ordinance, we may change in a, within a month.
Can I make a proposal on that issue? Because the number of lots, I understand what you're saying. Maybe we come to a compromise and say only X number of vacation home rentals allowed. Within the number of lots. Because we don't know at this point if lot forty-three wants a vacation home rental and twenty, so we say. X number of homes, vacation homes allowed within this PUD.
The wording we usually use is allow up to X amount. And then that's what we've used on other permits for. Not vacation home rentals, but other uses.
That way it still allows somebody that we're selling a property to, to have that option up to a certain number of the lots.
Well, and Laurie does have a good point. We've already allowed it in the area, not only, you know, basically in your facility, but I mean, Barron's, uh, have vacation home rental there, so.
And, and the other thing about the location of this PUD, you're, you're located right in between two recreational. Um, lakes that, this is something that's kind of in high demand, um, is to have a vacation home rental or a temporary second home rental.
So, Mr. Chair, what, what would, if we did do the up to?
I don't know. I just was sitting there thinking about trying to come with a compromise, um, a- and, you know. I, I'm kind of torn with the fact that we should have the same rights as everybody else as to use and that is already an established use. So that's why we put that in there. Do Daniel and I want to do a vacation home rental and have another vacation home rental? No, tends to be, it's plenty for me.
And, and my preference, if we did go to that route, and I'm not necessarily advocating that, but is to. Look at specific lots. I mean, my kind of point before, I, you know, I think it's a wish list rather than planned. And the PUD, I mean, you know, it can be more restrictive. It's kind of that purpose, you know. I'd like to see it away from the homes that you, or lots that you don't control. So you don't, we don't get into this argument. Of you're putting your vacation home rental next to a resident, you know, uh, because you, you control enough lots between you and your family. That you could pick lots that aren't next to lots that are not in your control. To avoid arguments. I guess.
I know, but it's also my, my civil rights too, that, you know, we have the same rights as everybody else that has lots. So. They essentially, all of those homeowners could turn theirs into a vacation home rentals. They, they have that same right to come to the county and say, you know what? We want to do a vacation home rental. Every one of their lots could be turned into a vacation home rental. So why would I give up that?
And it is general egg still or limited egg?
It's general.
General, okay, so yeah, good, you're right.
So that's, that's the reason why we're approaching it this way.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just, just as a comment though, if, if, if all those lots became vacation home rentals. Which, and I've stayed in areas where it's that way and it, it's great actually because there's no concern about. People in the center of those locations being upset about it. But, um, it just seems like. If, it would take away the argument that we hear so much on VHRs of, well, they're right in the middle of my development. Well, if. They all can be vacation home rentals, it's kind of takes that argument away.
Oh, at our last meeting, when we were talking about the VHRs, I guess I made the point that I would actually like to see. Defined by density or overlay district. And I, I think this is a perfect example, but it could be an overlay district to everything in there be VHRs. I think you're right. That creates less of an issue.
But you, you are getting into then, you're, you gotta remember, PUDs are set kind of separate from all the other zoning districts, so. You'd be putting restrictions on the PUD where, with our regular zoning ordinance, which we don't do.
Right. That was, sounds like you got a question coming?
Well, I, I do. I mean. Correct me if I'm wrong, the way I'm understanding this and the way I see it, does it have to be written that a, a VHR in each of these lots is, is slotted for that lot? If it's already a permitted use according to, uh, section two thirteen? I guess that's. It has to be part of the PUD conditions to be included. Otherwise you have to come get an amendment.
Amendment.
And just like you're looking at the PUD, once you define the PUD and approve it, not, some of those other items that can be in the PUD aren't allowed at that point after approval of the PUD.
That's why you have to, that's by basically ask for it or you don't get it right away.
Or you amend it later.
Yep, every minor amendment, which basically, let's say the owner of lot twenty-seven comes in, they want to build a VHR and it's not included. And they only want to amend the PUD for that lot, um, that's a four hundred dollar permit, right? Three hundred, four hundred? Just a minor.
Three seventy?
Well, that's put the refundable stuff, yeah. It's, it's expensive to change one thing. And so when we, when I met with the applicants, we got a list of what they would like to do. And so we put them in as here's what they would like, one of these uses on all the lots.
I, I've kind of brought up the flag on the VHR and kind of wish list, but I guess. You're, you're right, kind of given the zoning and all that, I'd probably withdraw that, my concern on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, just as perspective, what they can do now versus what they're requesting is significantly different.
You were going through your list of items?
Uh, that was pretty much about it. Uh, just the VHR stuff, but. I did talk with applicant just real quick here about possibly changing the word developers and our Architectural Review Board to. Approval of the HOA, which we do have other PUDs that require that down to the color of paint on a home. Because that's what the PUD says. You need approval from the HOA and the HOA's restriction is color of paint. That's how the, that worked. Uh, but he needs some more time to work on that because he believes that at some point when. More lots get sold, it trips into another entity. Is that right?
I would suggest, I know, if you could come up to the podium, that way it gets caught in the recording, so.
Well, essentially that just saying HOA is not enough right now. So he just needs some more time to try to come up with verbiage for it.
I believe the existing covenants state that once it's seventy-five percent sold out, that. Uh, homeowners association has to be formed by people who own properties within there and they have voting rights of. Uh, the homeowners association on issues like that, so. And I believe that's already the verbiage in the existing covenants, so I did, but I need, I'd like to do some research on that.
So, so if I understand you, you don't want to change to HOA until you've got time to research it, so.
No, no, the, the verbiage that we put as a requirement in here. From, you, you wanting to get away from developer, the word developer, and I'm just saying.
Or define it, just.
Define, as stated in the existing covenants.
I'd rather define it in the staff report.
Right, but I would like to see what it says in, in the covenants and try to make the two maybe work with each other.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, are, are we continuing this or are we resolving it today, uh, and voting on it?
I would like to resolve it today.
But you're saying you want to look into it a little more, that's.
I'm okay with either. I. I'm okay with either, I, it, it's been going on for almost two years. But the, the PUD is a solution to the, the, what the event, what the applicants are requesting and the, and the concerns that we have with the properties and things that have been done.
If the evangelists are concerned on putting HO in at this point until you look at it more, oh, you aren't?
I'm not, I just want to make sure that the verbiage is correct is all, and I'd have to reflect back to the, the covenants to make sure that that verbiage is, is correct, is all I want to do, I have no problem doing that, I just want to make sure we get the verbiage correct.
We just don't want to take and create a situation where county says one thing and the, the covenant says something different. So we want it to reflect the same, and it's a percentage, we can't remember what the exact percentage is, that the homeowners then become in control.
Okay. That's something PJ could accommodate, or does that have to be adopted right now to be?
Even your recommendation still has two more hearings before the commissioners.
No.
Or the board, sorry.
Okay.
So you could change it?
Yes.
Okay.
Or you could make an amendment, or make a motion that certain conditions are adjusted prior to going to the board?
Do you want me to try to do that, or does anyone else have comments, questions?
Go for it.
Okay, I'll, I'll throw something out there. I'll make a motion that we approve, PUD sixteen oh three with fifty-nine conditions. And from what I've heard, um, condition six, you need to change the word sign to square. On condition nine, you want to add in something about, you know, using overflow parking in forty-five until an established use has been determined for the property. I'm not sure, are we gonna, do you want to do anything with, um, I'm not sure we want to do anything with, uh, section twelve? It depends on what you guys figure out about permits for tents. I think fourteen is okay. Anyone have any comments on that? No, okay, um.
Laurie, if I could, maybe on twelve?
Okay.
I, I, I guess I would like to, to me, if you got it ten months a year, you might as well go year round, but then with the stipulation that, uh, structural loading is certified by a professional engineer.
I guess I, my comment on that is, let's remove the ten months and then, um, treat this person the same as others in the county, because they may not have that restriction that you're-
Well, you're making the motion, so.
Well, I know, that's what I'm saying, okay, so for twelve, I would, my suggestion would be to remove the ten months and just let them have it up, you know, depending, depending on how it gets permitted. And then that gets us to condition, um, forty-two, we're removing church functions. Condition forty-four, you're adding in that they will collect money to cover the cost for, um, lot seven and the RVs.
Which one was that, I'm sorry?
Forty-four.
No, they're, they're not.
You're not gonna add that? Okay.
No, it was in there originally that they were going to prohibit it.
So you are gonna leave that out, okay?
So, wait, go back to forty-four?
Go back to forty-four, no change, no addition.
Okay.
And then the, um, the conditions that include references to developers or architectural review will be, um, changed or made consistent with the existing covenant.
I like that.
And that would be my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, further discussion. I guess I'd make comment, Barb, go ahead.
I'm going to be voting against this, because, um, unless and, until the, um, directions in the PUD ordinance are changed, I don't think that this fits the PUD ordinance. And, um, it, I think we need to be more honest, and when a commercial business is being created, and I think this is a fine commercial business, that, um, we don't pretend it's something else. The PUD, uh, was intended, from everything I've read here, to make a community residential neighborhood, and that is not what this is.
I guess my comment is, uh, I think by my comments, you know, I believe this is far from perfect. I kind of agree with Barb on some of this, I really question whether it's really fits in the PUD at the same time. I, I'm gonna be voting for it, because I think it's better than the status quo that we've been fighting for a couple of years. And it's like another area of the county we had over VHRs, you know, it just, it seems like without moving forward, and, and this at least gives the county more control than over general egg. I'm not happy with everything in it, but it's, like I said, it's hard to compromise, I guess.
My, my comments are, and correct me if I'm wrong, PJ, this is just an overview of what they currently have CUPs for already, it's just condensing it into the PUD, so they don't have to get those CUPs for all the different things that they're currently doing, other than, I understand, designating the lots to specific, um, uses. But it's basically allowing them to do it all underneath the PUD instead of having all these different CUPs, is that roughly correct?
Roughly correct, there's some uses that are not covered under the conditional use permit that they are adding in now.
Right, that they're adding in there, but in general, it's stuff that they're already allowed to do, basically.
Yes, they could get individual conditional use permits for everything that they want to do, um, or our best fit in our ordinance is a PUD.
Okay.
Anyone else, other comments? Out from audience, or?
I just had a quick comment on, um, something that Nancy said earlier about, I'd like verification from D E N R, or at least you guys to be aware that this backfilling of a cistern off of the well that's located on our property that we share with them, I'm not certain that that's correct. Something to be investigated.
What do you mean by backfilling of a cistern?
Dan mentioned that, uh, some of the water, or that the current permit would allow them to backfill a cistern off of the well on lot five, and I'm just questioning whether that's correct. Something to investigate through D E N R, I would assume, but.
I guess I'm not following the question.
Right, are you saying you have a cistern on your property?
No, we do not, he's saying that when the water becomes available to these other properties as they develop, that currently, it, the backfilling could come from that, and I'm saying that I don't believe that verbiage is correct, but have to be investigated.
Okay.
I think he wants to say something about that.
Current engineered water system draws water off a well other than what she's referring to across Taylor Ranch Road on lot P. The statement I said, or I think Nancy said, that the well that the Bed and Breakfast on lot three and four is using currently and is shared with lot five, Messer Newcombe House, there are easements recorded that if in the future, the water system wanted to draw water off of that well, there is an easement in place to do so, a well agreement has already been recorded, so, that's, that's the gist of it. There's no intentions of using water off of it, but for, for whatever reason, the well on lot P ran dry. We have another well on lot five, that's a recorded well agreement and easements in place, that water could be drawn off of that well to fill those cisterns if need be. The intention is not to do that, but we have a backup plan.
But the cisterns, the cisterns are on lot five?
No, the cisterns would be located at the very bottom of the page on lot twenty-three B. And so there's two hundred feet elevation change from the bottom of the page to the top, that's the topography, and so it'll gravity feed from twenty-three B back to all those lots.
So you pump it all the way to twenty-three B and then let it come back down?
Yeah, correct.
And basically, if something happens to Taylor Ranch Road and cuts your water line, you at least have a backup water source right next to you.
Correct.
Hit an emergency for, or a van from water out.
Well agreements already in place, and the easements are already recorded in place, so.
The copy of both are in your staff report.
Thank you.
John.
Where do we stand on item number forty-four?
The way the motion is right now, it would be, it's, it's as published.
So you're gonna allow a campground?
That's, right now, it's saying three.
Allow a space for three RV sites, yeah.
There's no current outstanding violations currently, right, PJ?
Correct, well, this is fix, not on that lot.
Correct, that's what I'm specifically talking about.
But that's basically it, here.
Something to think about is they do have it listed that it could be redeveloped later on to a home, single-family dwelling, something of that nature, that's what they've asked for, is that it could be sold and developed as a single-family dwelling. Pardon me, I, I, I'm confused how you shut something down twice and, and now we're gonna start over and run it again. That, can somebody briefly cover how that works with me?
Because this is the proper avenue to request the use.
Alrighty. I get, I guess, sir, you know, if something happened on your property and you'd requested something and somebody complained and it got shut down, you could fix the problem, and then you could reapply, and then you could continue doing the same process, as long as you met the criteria to do it. That would be the way to, to be able to continue to do something that was shut down prior to. I mean, if, if a restaurant gets shut down for a health violation, they clean it up, they do whatever they gotta do, they reapply, they get, they pay their fine, and then they continue on once they meet the requirements. That make sense? It does make sense, it's just that when we purchased our property, that wasn't allowed there, so now it's, it's gonna be allowed. That's where I'm having trouble. I'm not arguing with you, I'm just trying to understand, you know, if, I guess I look at it that if I had known that was what was gonna be there, I would have never bought the property I have. Now that's being set up in my backyard, that's my, was my concern. But I understand what you're saying very much, so.
Fair enough.
Yeah, thank you.
That was a concern I had, because I mean, seven is an island between properties that aren't owned.
Correct, I, I agree, it, I don't think it belongs there.
Well, we could do a substitute motion and not allow that, but I mean, right now, the motion on the table is to keep it as is.
One of the reasons that we are, um, requesting that those three lots be used for RVs is because we aren't gonna allow RVs to be all over throughout the development.
I don't, I'm not sure which one, is it that one?
So that picture right there, our property is on the other side of the fence, and anytime we go in our backyard, we see the top of that property, which, that RV, or that, top of that RV, which has been elevated and protrudes way over the fence. So by allowing that one lot to have those three spaces for people who have guests coming in with RVs, it eliminates having this enjoyment, lack of enjoyment of your property throughout the development. That's why we implemented trying to have those three lots. So you aren't gonna have RVs being able to be parked everywhere within.
My, my, my concern that expressed early on, and when we started today, is, is this particular lot, where it's, it's an island sandwiched between the properties you don't own, why don't you pick a lot for RV parking that is more in all the lots that you guys do control?
Because of topography.
And you guys have done a lot of grading and flattening items, don't tell me you can't do it when you got a dozer out there.
Wow.
It, it, it seems like you're flaunting it in somebody's face.
No, absolutely not, I mean, that was there before Mr.-
It isn't in the properties that you own.
Pardon me?
It isn't in the surrounded properties you own.
Well, it was when it was put in, when we originally planned on that, the, the lot, we owned the lot right across from it, right next to it. It has since been sold.
So you sold that?
The lot across that Claussen's, we used to own that lot, that was-
Just north of forty-five?
This one here. That one, and we own forty-five.
Mr. Chair?
So it was, it was accessibility to, to, the topography, if you're out there, you know it is, and yes, we have done a lot of grading and cutting, but as you go up on that, over where we own the majority of those, the, the grading gets a lot more difficult, and to get an RV access.
Well, right, right now, the, the motion on the table is per your request, so.
Sure.
I'm just-
I, I just wanted to make it clear, do I?
For discussion, but unless somebody makes a substitute motion, we're moving with the three, and I guess Laurie, you-
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, lot seven, is that currently accessible from three eighty-five, is there an existing approach there? Is that part of it, is so the RVs can go in and out on three eighty-five, which is a state highway?
Um, no, they'll come on from Tayl, Summer Creek Drive.
They, but they can't exit or enter off of three eighty-five?
There's a big ditch there, you can see that in that photo.
Okay, well, I, you know, I was looking at the, I was looking at the, the map, I guess, there's not an existing approach then?
There is in a, on three eighty, going, I wish there was a better picture.
I'll get you the map, and then, how about that?
Well, I was looking at this, there's a line, that's not a road?
Yes, there's two roads.
There, right there, that one?
Yeah, so people is-
Harbin Loop.
Is that your intent to use that for the RV access?
Not necessarily, I mean, I, I, I had planned on coming up Taylor, or Taylor Ranch Road or Summer Creek Drive.
Okay, be, because I guess my comment would be, I mean, where better to put an RV lot than on a state highway? Instead of in the middle of a neighborhood, uh, you know, in your defense, I think it's a very good location, I don't know.
From that aspect, I agree, but I'm just saying from the standpoint of the lots they control versus harmony in the neighborhood, I guess.
So, so what happens if somebody comes and wants to buy lot seven? Are you gonna not sell it because it's your RV lot?
I guess if they offered me a million dollars for lot seven, I would sell it, I mean, I'm a business person, but the, the goal is-
That's sort of facetious about the million dollars.
I, I can't predict, is what I'm saying, I, you know, I, the goal is to have it as a community resource for not-
So, so you really don't want to sell it for a home? You intend to keep it there forever?
Well, yeah.
As long as you own the property?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I didn't like that number seven, but the rest of it makes sense.
Well, any further discussion? John, did you have any comments?
I mean, do you see my point? It's in my backyard, she doesn't want it in her backyard, so you're gonna put it in my backyard? I'm just saying, you know, maybe you should fit it in somewhere else where it's in the center of everything that you have. I mean, I understand you guys are in a tough position, and, and I just want to voice my opinion that I hope you guys see what's going on.
And I was arguing that just a few minutes ago, and I don't disagree, but I also agree with Laurie's comment, that you're on three eighty-five already.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. And anyway, but unless somebody is willing to make a substitute motion, we have a motion and a second on the table, any further discussion? Are you none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Then, need a roll call? Terry?
I'm the only one.
I don't know if I heard.
No.
I said aye.
Aye. Sorry.
Oh, there's two of us opposed?
No, I'm, I voted aye, are you saying there was only one no, right? We better do a roll call.
Right.
Rich?
Aye.
Aye.
Laurie?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Sorry, Sig. So it's, it's looking like that it's gonna be heard before the board on November first. Well, it's gonna be on there as a memo, but the official hearing will be the first, because that's a, uh, applicants are requesting.
That is, I mean, it does, uh, for, for the audience, I mean, it does go forward to- I guess that is, I mean, it does, for the audience, I mean, it does go forward to the board two more times before passage, so there's still an opportunity to express your views.
It'll appear on the meeting prior to that, but as a memo, as a request to continue per the applicant. But they're anticipating, even per the staff report, that it'd be November 1st for the first reading and December 6th for the second reading.
So, Mr. Chair, so can there be some kind of research to kind of... I mean, it all could work out to their advantage, but what is going on with, like, Black Hills receptions?
Yep.
What is going on as... I really do want an opinion from the County Highway on how this road district thing works. And it's going to be much better off for these folks if we actually get some good answers, because then the folks who are not happy with it at least have something to go by. The people who want to have this happen, they know what the deal is.
Would you like your representative from County Highway here?
I think it's a good idea.
14, we continue to October 24th, 6:30 PM. Item 15, County Board Report.
Board of Commissioners concur with Planning Commission's recommendation from September 26, 2016, Planning Commission meeting.
Items from the public. When it hasn't spoken, wishing to speak. Items from staff, building permit report.
2016, September, building permit report. Our singer-family residences are down 42% over this time last year. Mobile homes are up 29%. And residential additions, finishing basements, decks, that kind of stuff, well, not decks, sorry. Adding rooms is up 33%. Overall, we're down 6% for the number of building permits taken in. We're at 474. We were 504 last year. As far as valuation, we're down 20%.
Any questions for PJ on that? That painting county comp plan scheduled for October 20th, I believe?
That is correct. So, the commissioners have just voted to convene a special hearing on September 20th to hear the three different companies to present their comprehensive plan proposals and possibly make a decision at that meeting or not. After the meeting, I have copies of the three proposals and a copy of the agenda for all commissioners. And it will be made available to all the board members as well as soon as this meeting concludes. One additional item...
What time is that meeting?
That's going to be 9:00 AM, October 20th, 9:00 AM. And then one other item, Mr. Chair?
And just as a note, I did email you. I'd like to attend that. I'm in Colorado that week, so unfortunately, I will not be able to attend, so... Need to know that if a number of planning commissioners attending that, so it's not considered a forum?
Yeah, I checked on that. I don't think, do we need to advertise a planning commissioner meeting on the same time, same day? No?
So, that's not a concern of...
It's okay if we attend?
Well, we're encouraging everybody to attend, so you each have your individual opinions heard.
It's on the agenda where it says planning commission member comments, so it's been advertised that it's board and planning commission in attendance.
So, can, just as a thought, if you really want to, could we work out something where you, you know, we can hook you up electronically?
I'm going to be in the middle of meetings in Colorado.
Get a letter or an emailers?
Pardon me?
Would you, will you be writing a comment or your opinion, so I can bring it to the meeting for you?
Well, but I mean, if I don't hear the presentation, I mean, I guess my comments would be more...
Be based on the RFPs only, yeah. Well, they'll be recorded also, but the decision could possibly be made that day.
How soon does it get put up on, after it's recorded, that evening or not?
24 hours. 24 hours. But they could make a decision that day as well, we're hoping. There's one more item there for, if we're done with the comp plan.
Mr. Chairman, just for your information, the City of Rapid City discussed their short-term rentals at their meeting on the 3rd of October, and it's readily available on the internet. Actually, it was very easy to access the part that discussed it.
I believe the council turned it down and sent it back for review. Is that right?
That's right.
That is right, okay. And then there is one more staff item. The Black Hills Raptor Conditional Use Permit that was previously approved, and then they lost the land and had to come back for another one, that's being appealed and will appear on the October 18th Board of Commissioners meeting. The concern is from a couple neighbors that they are possibly creating reptile gardens. That's essentially what the appeal and complaint is, and some increased traffic on the highway.
I think water usage is another one that they're...
There was some concern about sediment and erosion control. We've seen the verbiage similar on other things that have come up. Not about that, but in the past. But all that would be addressed with building permits, not with the conditional use permit. Nothing further.
Items from membership?
Yeah, I need to let you know that I will miss the November 14th and 28th meetings.
14th and 20th?
28th, both meetings in November.
Another bike shift?
No. But if you want me to, I can, you can hook me up.
Well, I figure you're still going on vacation home rentals.
Yeah.
I have a quick question for PJ. How many, how many folks do you have come in asking for vacation home rentals, and then they come in and they find out that they're in suburban residential district and they can't move forward with what they're doing? I guess what I'd like to know is...
A lot of those come as phone calls, and they actually get routed to different people in the department, whoever's available. Jerry kind of takes those in, but very few actually come up to the counter. I think probably because the word's out. There, we do hear some talk of people who would like to do it. They're not asking to do it. They would like to do it, but they're in SRD, and they didn't meet the criteria, but not high numbers.
I, the city, the testimony said from the Planning and Zoning Department representative that they get calls daily and mostly from out of state, asking about the status of vacation home rentals in municipality.
One item I thought was interesting in the description I read was they were acting on one complaint.
Correct.
They found out fast, there's one complaint.
And a whole ordinance got...
It is.
Yeah.
Correct. It was in the paper.
The city staff was quoted as saying that this was all propagated by one complaint.
Which is kind of how ours started.
Which is kind of, you know, when you put that in relation to the hundreds, I think they said, of people they thought were renting out rooms. I forget what the actual number was, but...
Other items from membership? I guess, Laurie, did you want to be, make sure that you're a part of the meetings?
I can, if you, you know, if you'd like me to. I will be in a place where I can participate. I don't know how you guys do that. Do you Skype in, or what do you do?
Yeah, Skype. So, you'll be on the screen.
Because I can do that.
Yep.
Tell me what I need to do.
You'll see the agenda first, if you want to.
Oh, yeah.
Would that be best to have Andy and you talk with Laurie about that later?
We can Skype in, or we have the audio hooked into our speakers. If you just wanted to be on the phone, you'd be in the room as well, so whatever's easier for you.
And we could be very easily continue on vacation home rentals, and I think you want to be part of that.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to be included if, because I will be. I'll just be in Arizona.
Well, we Skype to Arizona.
Yeah. So, I'll talk to you about that next time, then.
So, the last time I attended one by phone, it was nine hours.
It's a little long if it's just audio.
I was really thankful that I arranged for more minutes.
But then maybe you don't want the visual, because it's like after nine hours.
If no other items from membership, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.